All right. Good evening. We're gonna start the Sohagen School Board meeting. It is six oh one P M. Um, we're going to have the presentation uh for humanities this evening before we do public input, because then it'll allow any public to make comments, because we will see if there's anyone online as well, and we'll address that when it's time.
There was a one person before I.
Okay, great. So, Elizabeth, would you like to come forward? And you'll need to press the button in front. Perfect.
My confidence here. Great. Excellent. All right. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'm really excited to be sharing with you some of the work that has been going on in the Humanities Department at Sohagen um in the past year, this year, and looking forward into the future. I do have, this is very English teacher of me, but a quick note on like vocabulary when I talk about the Humanities Department. That's obviously the English Department and the Social Studies Department as their own two separate entities coming and working together. When we talk about Humanities courses here, that's also the co-taught English and Social Studies courses. And we look at the separate English and Social Studies courses as being part of the Humanities Department as well. So it's pretty encompassing. I'll try and be clear about all the different ones as I go through. So I wanted to, in the first slide, approach this presentation by talking about the guiding questions and the work that we focused on last year, the questions and the work that we are focusing on this year, and where we hope to be heading in coming years. So kind of a past, present, and future approach. The goal of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year for the Humanities Department was to assess the current state of practice in terms of curriculum and instruction. And in doing this, this allowed for the completion of the curriculum templates that have been submitted to the board. It also allowed me to identify the areas of need that should be immediately addressed in that year. And it also allowed to begin the envisioning process for longer-term planning and action items that will be discussed shortly. So you'll see on the right slide there, some of the work we completed last year. And that work also continues to inform our priorities this year and beyond. So I'll be speaking to each of those things individually. Starting with, on the next slide, the Humanities Institute, which was in the summer of twenty twenty-one. So we came back to a somewhat normal year after the pandemic last year. And that opportunity was really great for A M S and Sohagen teachers to reconnect and share approaches to curriculum. And the Humanities Institute was where and how we were able to do that. That was planned in concert with some other district and building-wide administrators. Um, and that really, like I said, allowed English and Social Studies teacher to confer on matters of curriculum and instruction. Things like identifying areas where there might be some repetition, areas where there might be need, where we need to focus on bolstering things up a little bit. One item that was covered at the beginning of the institute that was important for all teachers was kind of an overview of House Bill Two. That's the law that pertains to what some people have called the teaching of divisive concepts, but officially called by the state the Freedom from Discrimination legislation. So I went over some of the pertinent language and concepts from that bill. We talked about implications that it has for um teachers, especially humanities teachers in terms of curriculum instruction. But that really did account for a short amount of the time during the institute, which lasted several days. So during this Humanities Institute, teachers were able to work very closely with their course-alike partners or the teachers of the same course for several days and work on some vertical planning, right? So articulating and lining up curriculum from seven through twelve. And again, that was especially important after the few years of disrupted learning that we had due to the pandemic. Um, this institute is also when the Sohagen Humanities teachers began working on their curriculum templates. I'll be talking more about those shortly. One of the benefits of this institute was really having everyone in one place for a sustained period of time where people could collaborate across courses, ask questions, really like occupy that space and work deeply on matters of curriculum. So that's how we kicked things off. On the next slide, I'll do a quick overview of the curriculum templates. So as I said, those have been submitted to the board. Um, and they give an overview of the Humanities curriculum that's really documented in a common, consistent format. And obviously, that's important to have things articulated in a similar way. Teachers worked on these starting in the institute and then throughout the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. These templates represent the core areas of commonality, key student understandings that the teachers of those courses identified. I think there were some really productive conversations around the the completion of these documents. As some of our Humanities courses last year had as many as four different partnerships, teaching the same course. Um, so there was a lot of dialogue amongst teachers about the varying approaches and instructional methods that they use. And that's why it kind of, it it takes a little bit of time to articulate, you know, what are those absolute essential things that we know must be a part of all of our units and all of our courses? I think it's also important to note that there's always going to be room left when we're looking at these curriculum templates for teacher autonomy, to be able to respond to student needs. So for example, one partnership might identify that their students need a little bit more time in a specific unit working on text-based evidence. And subsequently, that partnership might decide to spend more time on that unit or skill. A different partnership of the same course might see great student engagement and success with a short story unit or doing case studies in a particular unit in social studies, and they decide to add on to that to help support their students. Um, in addition to the room that we leave here for teacher autonomy, I think it's also important to note that by its nature, curriculum is always going to constantly evolve and be tuned and be iterated every single year, right? It's a part of the reflective process and the growth process of a course. And as um I work with the Humanities teachers to find, you know, new challenging texts for students to align reading and writing instruction, um, to make sure content and skill development will continue to happen in a progressive way. What you see in those um templates will continue to be refined, and that's just the nature of curriculum work. Um, on the next slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about one of the outcomes last year that arose from looking at our current practice, and that was identifying some of those immediate needs. So in the World Literature, World Studies course, which is the junior year Humanities course, the teachers engaged in a significant amount of meaningful work, and they're continuing to do so. So notably, one example of this is in order to comply with state law, they put together a really thoughtful unit on genocide in general and the Holocaust specifically, and that was in addition to that course last year. Another really big thing that was worked on was um some summer work time to revise the J L P or the Junior Learning Paper or Project, depending what what year the teacher started working here. The acronym changes a little bit. Um, previously, students chose a topic from the wide, wide world of all potential topics that they were interested in. They conducted research on that topic and they wrote a paper. However, in conversation with teachers, it became pretty clear that they found that students were selecting topics that were interesting to them, but maybe they lacked the requisite background core knowledge on in order to really meaningfully engage in critical research and synthesize their ideas and really take away the most they could from that assignment. And that meant teachers also had difficulty supporting their students as they engaged in that process, because the teachers too, you know, some of these topics were so niche that they couldn't push their students or support their students as much as they would ideally like to. The new iteration of J L P that's been rolled out this year so far has been met with success. Teachers have reported that the students are proud of the hard work they've been doing. They have see more of a curricular connection. They are also proud of the final product, and they're pushing those research and analysis and writing skills a little bit more. I also want to point out with the J L P that you'll all see later when we share the program of studies with you that while the J L P is going to remain a required assignment in World Literature and World Studies, we are going to recommend that it not also be a separate graduation requirement and denoted as such on student transcripts. That decision was met with a lot of conversation and feedback with teachers, both of the course and in the departments as a whole. And it has the unanimous support of teachers of that course. So this brings us in the next slide to this current school year and the questions we're grappling with and the items we are addressing. So as I just said, last year, we were able to complete those templates, which puts us in a place this year to begin a really more in-depth examination of what our documented curriculum tells us about our courses and then how we can further improve and refine from there. I think the Humanities teachers have been really eager to engage in reflective collaborative work during department meetings and other times. And doing that work has helped us identify some critical long-term goals for the departments. And this kind of collaboration and this kind of dialogue, as teachers have reported to me, is something that they feel has been lacking in previous years, and it's something we're all working to improve and capitalize on. So in the next slide, looking at how we're going to continue to align and refine our curriculum, you're gonna see that this is kind of a theme in this presentation I have for you. As I said earlier, curriculum should always be evolving, and teachers are working to refine their curriculum constantly. So some of the examples of how we're working to align and refine our curriculum, um, I'll start off with ninth grade. Um, ninth grade is the bearer or the carrier of civics education, and we're having conversations with the Social Studies teachers about really pinning down the New Hampshire history and government component in that course. On the English side of things, the English teachers in ninth grade are excited to start incorporating some different works of literature. They just wrapped up a unit on Lord of the Flies as a compliment to what was happening with the civic side of education and social studies. And that was a great experience for students to like get back to some reading stamina and engage in a work that was meaningful, and they were able to analyze. So that was great. In the wider Social Studies Department, we're continuing to talk about the requirement of genocide education and how we can incorporate some of those aspects in each of our social studies courses that students encounter. And this is, you know, a small example of the kind of vertical alignment that we're looking to offer our students to properly properly scaffold their knowledge and skills throughout their high school experience. Um, the English Department, as you'll hear about shortly, is looking pretty deeply into writing instruction and assessment. That's all a part of looking at our curriculum and instruction. On the next slide, this is something that is both new and I'm happy to say has been going well so far. As a part of our goal as a department to grow as a community of learners in service to our students, teachers in the Humanities Department have volunteered to participate in something called instructional rounds. And this is a facilitated process that follows a really clear protocol in which two teachers and I visit other teachers' classrooms and stay and observe for approximately ten minutes with a really specific focus on instructional strategies, right? Not worrying so much about the curriculum aspect of things, but like as an instructor, right? What strategies are these teachers using? We try and visit like two or three classes in each round. And after those observations, we have another facilitated debrief conversation in which the observers talk about what effective strategies they saw and most importantly, how they see themselves incorporating those strategies into their own classrooms and their own practice. And one of the things I think is really great about this is that you have teachers of the same course or the course-alike teachers. They're engaging conversation about their courses and their curriculum, but this helps get teachers outside of those they have immediate contact with and see what teachers of other grade levels and other courses are doing. And I think that that's, there's a lot of value in that, and it really helps foster collaboration and cooperative learning. And the teachers who have participated in this practice, which by the way, happens during their free periods, have found it to be really professionally rewarding and are planning on continuing the practice. So the next slide, building on this idea of collaborative work, this is another thing that is both going well now but was identified as an area of improvement, has been devoting department time to the kind of reflective work that teachers both requested and know that they need. So so far, this has involved examining student work, discussing units and assessments, like the genocide unit, like the J L P assignment, discussing instructional dilemmas that teachers bring to their departments as a like, hey, this is something I'm struggling with. I'm hoping to hear from my peers about like how we can support each other in this. We've also been working on vertical alignment. So in particular, examining the J L P, right? It is an assignment that occurs junior year, but because it's an important assignment, we want all English teachers and all teachers in humanities to really understand and support it. And that has led to a really rich discussion about how English teachers specifically are instructing and assessing writing and how we can better support students in this area. Um, as a department, we've identified this as an area of need. And I think there's some really good energy to take on this idea of like how we can improve our writing instruction and assessment. So in the next slide, do you see that leads us to another area where we think we can improve? So one of the focuses in our collaborative discussions this year in the English Department was considering senior year co- course offerings for English credit. Um, as I said, this has been identified for an area of improvement in more ways than we originally expected. So as you'll see up here, we have the course offerings that are available to seniors. Students need four credits of English to graduate high school. And if you are a senior at Sohagen, you have a choice of one of four seminars. Three of those seminars are paired with social studies, one is paired with science. If you don't want to take a seminar, you know, that is two credits, it's two classes, you can choose to take one of two A P courses. Um, beyond that, the only other English course we have available for students is a half-credit elective in creative writing. So effectively, what this means is that if a student is not interested in taking a seminar but also doesn't want to take A P, there's not really a path forward for them. So we originally started a conversation about, you know, should we offer a fourth-year, one-credit, non-A P option for students in the sense of equity, among other things? And as we weighed that proposition, we came to the realization that we're at a really critical juncture to make even more meaningful, sustained change to improve the learning experience for students. Which brings us to the next slide, which is a journey we are embarking on right now, which is at the end of the day, a self-study of the entire department that I think is going to yield a lot of like positive change and improvement. This is one of the biggest and most consequential action steps we're working on right now. So like I just said, that was reached with feedback from teachers after a meeting in which we discussed that non-A P one-credit class. We agreed it was in the best interest of students. Instead of just putting a class to fill that gap, we really needed to critically look at the entire senior year English experience and say like, what are we offering to our students? What do we want from the senior year English experience? What do we want aligned? Where do we want to potentially diversify? So we're going to look at everything and see how it can be revised and improved. And underlying all of this work is going to be that really critical question of what should the English experience be for students at Sohagen? This means that that potential single-credit course is going to be part of a larger, more meaningful consideration of what it means to be a senior in an English class at Sohagen. And then we're gonna, as I'll say in a few minutes, work backwards from there. This process, I think this is so important, is going to be data-driven and collaborative. So we'll have Matt McDonald, our learning um student achievement coordinator. He's going to assist us in examining student learning and achievement data. We'll solicit student feedback. We'll assemble our vision for what we want. And from there, once we really deeply consider that senior year experience, we'll look at junior year and then sophomore year and then freshman year and put together a really robust, rigorous, thoughtful English programming offering for our students. So that segues nicely to the next slide and thinking about the future. That self-study is not going to be done in a month or two months, right? It's not going to finish at the end of this year. It's a really, really big thing, but it's important to take the time and do it right. So it will be carrying into um next school year. As with everything we do, our work is grounded in improving the learning experience and educational outcomes for students. This is going to be achieved by engaging in consistent data studies, continuing to target vertical alignment for English and social studies, grades nine through twelve, and further clarifying what opportunities we want to offer students in our program of studies. So I wanted to speak in the next slide a little bit more about what I mean about by data studies and what that's going to look like at this school. Studying data should inform all of the decisions we make as a department, and that means multiple points of data. So yes, it means standardized tests and achievement scores and looking at that as one point of data. It also means looking at how students are performing within the class, both on specific assignments and in their course scores in general. It means looking at student feedback. When we think about our um course offerings, it means looking at course requests and enrollment numbers. You really need to consider all of those different points. And considering all of those data points together is going to help us as a department to get at a learner-centered problem um that will help us address and frame our work and focus our energies. So when I say that, I mean, we really want to start targeting specific concerns when we're looking at data. So things like, why do students in this specific grade seem to be struggling with selecting effective evidence from a text, right? These are the kinds of questions we want to eventually identify and then work to improve. So we'll be doing that um to improve instruction and learning outcomes and to make larger-scale improvements like adjusting our course offerings. I've already talked about this idea of looking at the seminar experience, the potential of one credit of English. What, we have a lot of different options on the table. Some English teachers are curious about the idea of a writing course that freshmen can take or are required to take in their freshman year, but these are really early, early visioning stages. Future topics are also going to include discussing the role and usage of social studies modules and English modules at this school and how we see that serving students and improving the student experience. So I know a lot of this sounds like it's the long game, and it is, right? When you're engaging in this really kind of in-depth study, but that doesn't mean we're going to wait months and months to make appropriate adjustments as we see them come up. So like last year, when we saw we needed to revise the J L P, when we knew that we needed to work on creating a really meaningful genocide unit in world lit world studies, we're going to be doing really both of these things at the same time. So these data studies are going to lead us to long-term and short-term actionable goals. And that means as we make those changes, to bring this full circle, um, our curriculum will continue to iterate and be refined and aligned and updated as well. All right. That brings me in my rapid-fire, quick-talking presentation to my thank you for listening to this, and I'll happily take any questions that you have.
All right. Let's open it up to school board members. What questions? Who wants to start with the entire download of information you just gave us? Thank you. It was extremely thorough. And what's in the packet with all of the curricula with? It's a lot. It's over a hundred pages.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's amazing, and the detail that's in there is fabulous. Um, I'm just gonna ask one quick question on that too. So when you're looking through everything and looking, we were talking about the ninth grade and tenth grade and looking at, and it and with all the detail in there of what's in the curriculum. And you said that the teachers have the choice of choo, you know, they get personal choice to tailor to how their.
To what their students needs, yeah.
How are um ref- reference texts, reference material, magazines, films for films? How are those, how are those chosen? So we don't run into a foul of H B two.
Yeah, so that's a great question. I will say, like, the the teachers here took, you know, that overview very, very seriously, right? And any teacher who feels a concern, like, look, I, this is something I want to talk about, or this is something I want to cover, or this is a resource I would like to share, like, can you kind of look at this through your H B two lens? And then we'll sit down and we'll talk it over. And we come to realize more often than not, right? Like, okay, well, what you're looking at here, you know, yes, it under H B two, you can use, can still, and you should still talk about the civil rights movement, right? We're not erasing history here, right? That we need to contextualize things and remember like what our learning goals are and that the state guidance actually specifically says this for that legislation too. A student being made to feel like uncomfortable at some of the things that they're learning doesn't mean that there's been a violation of this legislation. So I would say, like, the indirect answer is teachers are very cognizant, and they'll reach out to me. They'll reach out to Dana. They'll check in with an administrator and to look at it through that critical lens, because they they want to be sure they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, great. It's nice to hear they're getting support.
Yes, I try my best.
Fantastic. All right. Questions? Steven?
So, thank you very.
You're very welcome. Yeah. Yeah, so I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
The thing that we expect of our our ninth grade. Have we identified issues that we may want to modify? Because self-reflection isn't necessarily that we're doing things bad, right?
Absolutely not.
What can we change? What can be modified? So kids are absorbing maybe content that's a different set of lens. That experience is great from the transition all the way.
Yeah, so I feel I I I think there's two different questions there. One of them is, this won't surprise anyone, that Christine is really on top of like the state expectations and what's going on at A M S. So before the school year started, we actually had a conversation about the new expectations for the um teaching of genocide, right? And we landed on, okay, I'm gonna work with the high school teachers. We'll tackle this problem, see what they feel is feasible for us to cover in each of our grades and each of our courses. And then we'll have a chance to connect again and see what the eighth-grade teachers feel, like they can fit in and what strategies are working there. So I think um our goal right now is to make sure we're communicating, like, here's, here's what we're covering. Here's what we think needs to be worked on. Christine can help fill me in on things on A M S. And then we work on like bridging the gap between those two things. Um, in terms of the self-study, you're absolutely right, right? The more, I think, outside perspectives we get, the better. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted specifically our um student achievement coordinator to help with the data studies and things like that. Have someone who's not sitting in the department right now, someone whose job it is, at least partially, he wears a lot of hats to come in and say like, okay, you know, we, I I'm looking at this as an outsider, right? I am walking you through this data, not as a teacher of any of these courses, but let's really step back and think about what we are looking at here. I know Dana and Mike have expressed interest in like being a part of this self-study and hearing what the teachers have to say. And I also think a really important piece of the self-study is like the report out, right? And meeting these checkpoints and, of course, working with social studies teachers and people who are experts in their curriculum area. So blind spots are spotted and that, like, just the sense of having fresh eyes makes the experience more meaningful and more lasting. So we're definitely going to aim to do that as frequently as possible. I don't want it to be like a a closed loop, right? Where we're all just talking to each other about what we already do. So I think that's a great point. Yeah, so the, we, we have a varied schedule when it comes to using our late starts. We're trying to rotate this year through different topics. Um, so it's not always going to be a department meeting on a late start. We'll do either a staff meeting or a C O P meeting, which is built-in professional development as well. Um, in terms of professional development in the department meetings, I think things like, we had a teacher share her instructional approach to the J L P, and then teachers all read sample student work, and they talked about the rubric and what they saw and what their takeaways were in terms of what juniors were doing, how that informs their writing instruction as teachers of sophomore classes, of freshman classes. Instructional rounds are really also professional development, especially because teachers are choosing to do that outside of those required meeting times. Um, but I do think it's really the um amazing willingness of teachers to grapple with instructional questions and curriculum questions during our devoted meeting times. And I've tried to make that a priority for them as well. That leads to that strong professional development. And then, of course, teachers are seeking out professional development that follows their, maybe more of their own specific interests, either through C O Ps this year or through their own professional development time and funds. I'm not sure if I thoroughly answered your question. Great.
Thanks. Who else?
Yeah, um, that was great. I really appreciate Mike, uh, particularly Steve facilitating these uh presentations. So far, they've all been excellent. Your uh, your, I guess, the this massively intense document of the curriculum in our packet. Um, are you asking for us to approve that?
I'm not asking.
I don't mean, I mean, is that, it's in our consent agenda. And I'm asking if it's for approval, does that mean that it's been changed since some period of time?
Yes, it's the, it's arisen through the institute, and it's the updated curriculum that is coming forward in the consent agenda to approval. That is the, that's the protocol here.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be tonight.
I prefer that maybe not tonight, especially if we could then, at the interim, see what has changed. What is, where has it evolved? Because it's impossible to to see. And that would be really interesting to see, like, where were we? How, where are we making improvements? And along that process. And along that process and I'm looking through that, I was curious about um, just where civics lies in the curriculum. And like there's one, two, three, four, five, six nodes, authority, government structure and power, political spectrum, media, humanity and urban geography and uh, improving South Hegan. What was missing and maybe we could continue this conversation uh, uh, later, but I wanted to plant the seed, some of my feedback is really um, you know, constitutional rights and you know, foundation about what it is like to be an adult. What, what does it mean when you sign a credit card agreement, an insurance policy, a lease, a student loan? Um, when you take out bigger bank accounts, the duties we have to each other as people, why is it important not to get into a bar fight? Right? Um, and all of those types of things. Um, what does it mean to sign a contract? How do you know you, you've entered one? And what are your obligations and duties? Um, I think it'd be really helpful for, for, uh, it's not there. It would be the, the right place would be the humanities um, to add something like that. Maybe it's a whole course devoted to that. So seed planted. And you're, um, and one other just comment, cause words matter. Um, your kind of like your essential question midway through was what should the English experience be for students of SHS? Maybe English isn't quite the right word. What, what are we talking about? The humanities experience?
So that's, that question is really interesting and it gets at one of the reasons why we're starting with English because um, students are required to have four credits of English to graduate, but the same is not true of social studies. They're required to have three credits. So we, that's why we're narrowing our focus in on English senior year because it is this commonality, right? Regardless of which course or which, if you choose AP, if you choose a seminar, English credit is the unifying thread there. So that's why that's specifically what um, we're narrowing in on. I did want to loop back to the first thing you said about the changes in curriculum, which addresses why this is such a massive undertaking completing these curriculum templates because um, while curriculum documents existed in lots of different detail and lots of different places in one note and all other formats of um, software and drives that I was not familiar with. Um, we didn't really have a, the uniformity of the template that you see in the document that you have. So tracking changes um, becomes really, really difficult because while teachers were recording their curriculum, um, it wasn't in this very standardized similar way, right? We have some standardized things about like assessment maps. We have standardized things about other aspects of the course, but in terms of like this clear overview, I don't know when the last time that existed at South Hegan. So I can definitely say things have changed, but being able to say, we can look at this document in box one and these new documents in box one and find that linear difference. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that in terms of another specific document.
We have to be very large, big picture theme changes.
Yes.
Because this is a, a new, this, the, the template was agreed upon prior to this work, including the middle school. So we do have consistency through the, through the template. Um, but that doesn't look major themes or major changes we can produce. But it, but certainly it's not like a red line change. Forward, yeah, we set the baseline.
Now we can do red lines going forward.
Exactly, but, but there are, you know, courses have changed and there's certainly levels we can provide some changes. Uh, but red line, we really have set the baseline and in conjunction with the middle school too, the, the seventh and twelfth.
So it was a while ago, it is posted to our website for reference. If anyone, you know, wanted to take a look at our previous.
This is going to replay, all these templates are going to replace out. This is terrific. This is really very detailed and you can look and say what course is actually covering what material and length of time and materials used. Yes. So we're gonna see this for all of our departments?
We're on that journey. We're on. But the journey goes at different pace, different rate, just so you know. But we're on the journey.
Good.
Including um, the middle school synergy as well. Um, but you know, things like time, right? Professional development time, summer institutes available, all that has to do, right? The, I like to say time is the currency of school improvement.
Yes.
We spend it is very.
Which I was gonna actually ask a question about time. It, I'm just thinking, because we're, we keep talking about start time changes and things and I'm just curious, do you hear feedback or receive feedback about being pressed for time and delivering curriculums fully?
I think it really depends on the teacher and on the course, right? I don't think I've ever met a teacher who doesn't feel cramped for time.
They all want more.
Right, right. It's the end of the year and you think about the things that you didn't have a chance to get to. And I also think a lot of it depends on teacher preference too, right? The, some teachers prefer a longer period. Some teachers prefer an eighty minute period. So I think it very, very much depends on the course, the discipline, the bell schedule, all of those things. So I don't feel confident giving you an answer there.
Okay.
But we love instructional time, don't we?
We do. Let's see, you know, I love nothing more than.
Yes, yes. First, I'm sorry I missed the beginning of your presentation. It was at other school board business, but unfortunately had to stop and feed my animals before coming here. Um, so I, one, thank you for doing this. The part I saw was wonderful. I'll go back and watch the other part earlier. The one question I have is um, I find these really, really helpful and I really enjoy hearing. I mean, you know, we've heard, we heard a special ed presentation and this kind of overview. And I wonder if there's been any discussion with community council about if they would welcome just kind of this, hey, this is what's going on in this department. This is what we're working on. You know, a drop in and a presentation um, to them at different times. So I don't expect you to answer it, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a thought because as much as we learn from it, I assume they would, they would learn. And it's, I, anything that keeps them in the loop, I always appreciate too. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, I, I can definitely bring that to community council next week. Uh, I do like sharing things that I find interesting about school board meetings uh, in my community council reports, but stuff like this, you know, major projects that we're working on over the span of years. Uh, yeah, I can definitely, you know, bring that back to community council and just give them resources so that they can see what's happening.
Thank you. Other questions?
Um, just one other comment. I mean, we could do this privately, but I, I think it's important for people in the community to hear. But the one section that really kind of gave me pause was the political spectrum question. This is not a new question. This doesn't change. Uh, I have experienced this with my own children and there's something about it that let me just read the summary. During the political spectrum unit, students will identify the different groups on the political spectrum and the characteristics that make up the typical members of that group. Students will practice determining whether a statement is typically liberal or conservative and explain how they know. Students will reflect on their own views to distinguish where they would currently place themselves on this political spectrum. Finally, students will learn about the power and impact of political parties by, as a way of grouping people of similar, similar beliefs and in running a government. I take issue with that because if we want them, it's, it's inconsistent with the portrait of a graduate. It's inconsistent with critical thinking. It's in, it's inconsistent with independent thought. You know, the question is, what do you think about the issue? And your answer may be on one end of the political spectrum, but it's an is, issue driven um, and that um, reflection on yourself. Not a, the goal ultimately of saying, oh, I fall on this part of the political spectrum, therefore I'm this person, this defines me somehow. I mean, you know, libertarians will, will, will say, you know, for example, if the question is abortion, like, well, it's not my job to say that. But people with maybe more religious bent on, who knows where they like, they'd say, well, yeah, but that's, you know, they have a different view. Well, okay. But is that a political question really? Or is that a personal question? It's in our politics. So that's the nuance that I think is missing with the political spectrum summary as it's currently framed. And I'd like to see the students um, think about answering these types of in questions. What do you think about gun control? What do you think about, you know, human rights and this? What do you think about X B, you know, all those topics of the day? Um, and, and analyze it through their own lens and then, and then they, oh, well, that's, that puts you on that issue over here. And oh, this other issue that kind of puts you over here. And I think they'll learn that they're all over the political spectrum, depending on what the issue of the day is.
Yeah, I um, just to speak to that really briefly, I've had a lot of conversations with the ninth grade teachers specifically about learning about the political spectrum. And it's a very complex thing, right? Because yes, we want students to grapple with complex issues, right? We want them to understand the many issues and the variety of stances that exist on those issues. We want them to understand their own thinking better, right? Those are all things that we value. We also want them to understand the political party system and what parties traditionally stand for and what their platforms are. Where um, some scenarios get a little bit tricky and we've heard this from parent feedback is that um, especially freshman year, having a student share, this is where I stand on this political issue can be um, it makes students feel vulnerable. It can make them feel uncomfortable. Some feel great about it, right? They're very, they're able to articulate their thoughts well. Others fear um, being ostracized and things like that because of they, they don't necessarily want, I, I don't want to, me to be associated with my politics or maybe I don't know what my politics are. And I think that we are in a current like culture and environment where attitudes towards political opinions and divisive issues is very, very heightened. And the teachers right now are working to navigate that, right? How do we help our students understand the nature of complex political issues in a way that they still feel safe and supported? And not like they have to express political or personal views when they maybe don't feel comfortable doing so. But it is important for them to grapple with those things for sure.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Yep, sure. Having two kids who went through that program, I would say that um, my, my kid's experience was exactly kind of what you were talking about. It wasn't so much like, are you in this camp? I mean, they'd come home and say, it's interesting, cause I'm kind of in this camp here and in this camp here and you know, and they'd, and they'd have those, they'd have those discussions. So I never felt like it was a, you know, what political party do you identify with? It was more what you were talking about, what, I mean, they do have, each have platforms. And, and it is part of the government decision on like, okay, you need to make a decision, even if you've got some beliefs here and some beliefs here. You know, this is how it's gonna work ultimately, cause you can't, you know, you're not splitting your vote, getting half a rep on each side. Um, so I think it is actually a very valuable discussion. If there's a concern of people feeling like I don't want to share what my view is, um, I guess another approach too, and I'm just throwing this out for thought, would be that people can take a position. I mean, law school, we're always being asked to take a position, even if it's not what we necessarily believe, you know, take a position and defend it. What are the, what are the reasons to defend this position? Why might someone say they're pro death penalty? Why might someone support the death penalty? Why might someone not without necessarily it being this is where I stand on it if people aren't ready for that level of sharing. So.
Uh, I'll add into the conversation. I think a lot of the strategies that are used are similar to that.
Yeah.
And uh, it's something in the last two years as we work on this, yeah, here more, more actively, HB two kind of helped uh, you know, kind of put that on the forefront of, of people's minds a little more um, you know, forcefully. But I think uh, people are very cautious. They're very careful about how they discuss politics, how we teach politics. Um, and, but there's, there's something that's important to, to us as, as a school, as, as administrators and teachers is you have to be researched before you can speak about things. It is important to be well researched and well read so you can speak, so you can decide what you just scenarios like this, defend a stance that you might not believe, but you have researched it. And, and so I think that's the crux of as we talk about politics here is to, to be read, to be researched, to be able to civilly be part of conversations and classroom discussions. And um, and then at the end of the day, it's really important for us as administrators to work with our teachers and our students that they, we, we shouldn't talk about personal beliefs as instructors as we're facilitating these conversations. And that's really important uh, to keep the environment as safe and as welcoming and inclusive. Uh, but right now, I think John, your question brings to the point, it's a reflection of society. People are overly concerned right now about politics and, 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 and you know, compared to where just four years ago, five years ago, six years ago. And we're very thoughtful and intentional on how we, you know, uh, bring these things into our classrooms. And there's been many discussions within the humanities departments and at the admin level to be really careful and really cautious. And uh, and that's going to be how we're going to move forward. So just wanted to add that to it.
So I appreciate the reaction and maybe you could look at the unit summary and reframe that a little bit to capture the essence that you just explained. Um, so that's not, the goal isn't to place themselves on the political spectrum, but to understand where they might fall on any given issue in the current climate of politics and they.
And the debt. Not to plug my own presentation too much, but that's another example of iterating and refining things from year to year for sure.
Great, appreciate the response.
I don't know, I, I don't know how it has worked out, but I was involved probably ten years ago um, on the panel that they used to have come in. And I loved it. That was my only introduction to South Hegan back then. And I thought it was really well done. I don't know if you still do something similar. But they had everything from anarchists through libertarians, all of the people. There's a very friendly panel. The kids could ask anything they wanted. Um, so I thought that was a really cool thing. And, and there was sort of a feeling that all of the opinions, all of the things were respected because everyone's in the room. So you, there wasn't that fear of what's being taught because we were all there.
Right. Any comment, other comments, questions? Board? No? Okay, Elizabeth, thank you so much for the time.
You, I appreciate it.
Formative and I'm, I have a feeling we'll probably not necessarily approve the humanities curriculum, depending on people feel, because I think everyone needs to digest.
It's a lot to digest. Yeah, for sure.
I know I took one read through it and it, it was a lot, but now in the new light, I might take another look. So appreciate that.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Dana, Mike, thank you for supporting. Okay, so we will go to public input, um, session one of two. If you have something you'd like to say, please approach. And you're going to want to press the button up front just to turn the light green before you speak. And you'll need to introduce yourself and say what town you live in.
My name is Terry Ryber. I live in Amherst, New Hampshire. Um, I just wanted to give the board an update that I'm working with a group of voters who's working on a tax cap warrant. Uh, this warrant is going to be going on the Su- Su- Sahigan School District warrant. It's also going to go on the Amherst warrant and the town warrant. I won't get too much into details because I know this is public uh, comment, but it's basically a tax cap that is really intent of it is to try to minimize the upward upshot of, of basically taxes and tax increases for, for uh, taxpayers. I mean, I, I've talked to a lot of people that signed this warrant and people in town. And there's just definitely a concern that, you know, we're, we're seeing taxes raising fairly quickly and we want to control the future uh, trend of that. So to that effect, we, we're, we're, I, I worked with a group of people, a committee, and we put together and researched this warrant. And uh, you know, it involves getting signatures and getting the signatures checked and then, you know, um, submitting it to the relative uh, authorities to get the uh, the, the petition on the warrant. So with much further ado, that's kind of what we're doing. I don't know if you've seen any, any artifacts of that process.
It was sent to everybody on the board.
Yeah, I mean, we're still working through a few things and, but we, we fully plan to have everything in place to um, to get this on, on the warrant.
Okay. It's really not a question answer time. Public input's public input. So I think you might need to take it, we'll have to do it another, something maybe we can put on a next agenda or another agenda to speak to. Or we need to ask afterwards, cause otherwise we involve and it's, it's an input session, not a give and take session, unfortunately. Yes.
How late is that?
It's, it's gonna be, it'd be later. I, it best is, he has my contact information and we'll be in touch. And it might be something we just need to get together offline and have a discussion with.
Yeah, Steve has my information, email, probably phone number. Um, I'm willing to answer any questions anyone has at a one-to-one level. Um, if you want to have another session to really kind of dig into this, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, uh, uh, mentioned, we just want to make sure that everybody understands your intent in the operational of the article. That's, and we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Other to make sure.
Yeah.
That's all, but we, at, at some point we'll get together and make sure we understand uh, exactly how this would work.
Yep.
Sure. Um, but you just said there's something going on later today around.
Well, in the agenda, we have two public input sessions. There's one at the beginning of the meeting, at the very end. Um, and I'm sure you guys were thinking that we could have some sort of input. Um, and I'm sure you guys were thinking that we could have some sort of input back and forth, but it's an input session. So no, unfortunately.
Okay, so.
Yeah. But it's not on the agenda to discuss.
But we could, someone could make a more, place it on the agenda. And we could discuss it.
Yes.
I make a motion to place this topic on the agenda.
Second.
We got a first and a second discussion?
I mean, and I don't.
About whether we want to put it on.
Yeah, for my discussion, I I don't, I mean, I I'm not expecting a a long, long discussion on the agenda, but I'd like to have a brief discussion because I think it will help us as we move forward on. We don't have further.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and and to be clear, the the reason why there's not a back and forth is because if we, if Terry comes up and we engage with him and then somebody else comes up and they want to engage and we don't want to engage with them now, it looks like an unfair treatment. But he's proposing putting something on our, that's a pretty significant move. And if you have a question, I'd like to know more about the intent, that the earlier we can get it some more, a little bit of information, the better. And if that information is presented publicly here, that's all the better for the community.
So we, let's take a a vote on whether we want to add this to the agenda this evening. We could do it right after public input if we so choose. So it was in favor of adding it to the agenda. And those opposed? One opposed, so that'll pass. So after public input, we'll see if anybody else has any input, we'll bring you back. So you hold tight for us a few minutes.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to add their input?
Hi, everybody. Um, Jeannie Lu from Amherst. Um, I did have a question about uh whether the Finance Committee should be able to weigh in on the petition warrant article that he just discussed. Do we know whether we can make a public comment about that?
Valid, I would say, yes, they have the right to input, so I.
So it has to be, there's also, um, every petition warrant article gets a public hearing.
Right.
So there's obviously at the public hearing and and but um beyond that, it's certainly up to the board, but by statute, there will be a public hearing in which the petition warrant article we presented the community.
So at that time, we could. Well, because you're also, I'm speaking to you because you're also finance, Sahegan Finance County Chair. You have a meeting next week.
We do.
And if we have more information, I think it would be good for you guys to hear it at that time, too. So you just have your little more thought before it shows up at the public hearing.
Yeah, well, and the other thing is that with my other hat, my supervisor, the checklist hat, I just um confirmed that all the people who signed that petition were registered voters, so I have have seen the uh petition itself and actually returned it to the SAU um to um, I guess, the clerk um who's supposed to take care of it, so. The other issue that I was concerned about um is um not related to that at all. I, I understand and I I didn't get to come to the last SAU board meeting, but I was able to watch um and I um understand that um you all are putting together a committee um to review the process for um how to handle future cases um regarding uh, I guess regarding word board members, I'm not exactly sure what your charge was, but um I, I, you know, I I've come before you all um on multiple occasions to talk about my concern about the process and how questionable it has been throughout. And um I was particularly disturbed when um I um saw that one of the members of another board was allowed to speak um for quite a length of time to sort of relitigate the case um against Mr. Glover. And my um concern was that um I I was hoping and in the future, I'm hoping if that you come to the conclusion that um the boards would have some say as to whether um a person could could do that publicly uh after the case has been closed. Um, so that's, that's my concern and I hope that that's something that you will address um in your, in your committee meetings regarding um future process.
Thank you, thanks. Anybody else from the public would like to address the board? Is there anyone, is there anyone online who would like to address the board? If there's anyone online, first of all.
There's one person and I don't see a hand up. If they put the little rules in the chat.
Sure, so if there is um anyone online, um we'll take public input through the virtual audience.
It's uh, it's someone who I think knows the rules.
Okay.
I'm gonna throw them in.
So if they are interested in speaking, please raise your hand. No, I better go forward.
Sorry, I should have put the rules in. There.
There you go. All right. So if there are no hands being raised?
No.
Okay, we will move forward, so we will move forward. Terry, why don't you come forward and we'll uh address the questions? So this is actually good. I appreciate this. I thought we were going to make comments and then we just have him come up and he could make his public comment in response to it. But I guess, I guess the one thing I just want to raise that I'm a little confused about is this difference between the 2% or the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers of the Northeast as of um the end of the prior, the prior year. And so, so two things, give me some pause. One, like if we look at this year, we're already at, I think, 9.1%, which is a couple percent higher than last year for the Consumer Price Index. And costs, when we're doing this budget, we've got significantly higher costs than we might have had in in a prior year. So so the the actual increase in costs is happening now, not in that year. Um, and I don't know the answer to that, but I just, that that seems like a little bit of a conflict to me. And then the other part is, I'm wondering, does it, does it average or does it carry over? I mean, if we've got a 9% Consumer Price Index this year, but you know, Mr. Barry does a really tight budget. Our budget is, you know, we're at 2.1% despite the fact that costs have gone way up, you know, we've cut everything, but then the following year, you know, 2% would be the right number according to the warrant article, but now we've got an expense that we didn't plan. Because it feels almost like it encourages like, oh, gosh, we got to put these, we, damn it, we better put these expenses in now because if we don't, if we have a 2% year, how are we going to fix the skylights? Um, gee, does that make sense? Like, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to balance how those two would work. And as I said, if, you know, an averaging might have some, you know, if there's an historical look back, like over a five-year period shall not exceed the average of 2% or the annual CPR for that period. But it, it, I'm wondering for your thoughts on that, and that was the one thing that just jumped out on me, at me.
Well, I'll do my best to address some questions. Uh, the first question is, if you have a year where uh you feel that you need more uh funds than the 2% or an inflation rate, whichever is least, you can propose that budget, but you would need a three-fifths majority to get that budget passed. So if you can make a really good case for it uh that there is extenuating circumstance in that given year that the 2% or the or the inflation rate, whichever is less, isn't going to cut it for you. You're free to to continue to offer those uh to offer that budget to the the voters. And if you can get a three-fifths majority, it'll pass. But then to your second point, no, there's no averaging or this is just year to year, you know? So if one year you get 2%, the next year you get, you you get the 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 60% vote and let's say you get 4% that year. Then the following year, you would be beholden to the 2% or inflation, which is ever less. So it doesn't stop you from presenting other budgets. It just creates a higher threshold to get those budgets to pass.
So I thought the three-fifths vote required talks about the passing of this warrant.
That is true.
And I don't see something in here that says a higher budget could be passed.
It's in the RSA, that is absolutely correct.
Worry about that.
Yes, yes.
So that's good to know because I did not know that, but that, as I said, that seems like I don't know, it seems like a high burden potentially. And I am, and I'm just throwing this out there because I, my concern is always as I sit on this board, making sure we have particularly the long-term capital needs, so we don't end up with a crisis at the high school. And I would hate to lose the ability for us to, or for us to have to get three fifths to pass a required maintenance that might exceed this cap if that were to happen. Uh, because the down-the-road consequences of that are potentially much worse. So that's, that's the part that gives me pause. I mean, I think you'll be happy when you see the budget that's been prepared for this year. I think uh there's been a lot of work to try to keep it um tight. Um, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that we, you know, that's not always within everyone's control while also being fiscally responsible to what we have to do to maintain our schools. So thanks for the work on it.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to, something I mentioned to Terry earlier and Dan, you might be able to help us look into this or Amy. But one of the questions I had is if this happens, if this goes into place, what happens with our default budget calculation that's a required RSA, how you calculate it, and it exceeds 2%? How, what, I think we'd have to ask our legal, I don't know what wins, does that make sense?
Yeah, I.
I mean.
Answer the nuance in that.
I think we'd have to ask our legal counsel on, because default calculation is an RSA. And if it happens to go over 2% because we have contracts in place.
There is a um community, I believe that is default that has a cap. So I can like talk to that.
Okay, so that would just be good for us to understand the.
Pretty sure it would be that case, so I could call and find, they they've had it six, seven years perhaps.
Okay.
It's a cooperative school district.
Okay.
Um, that has.
That'd be good for us to understand.
Yeah, so I can dig in and find out.
Okay.
It, oh, do you have any answers?
Put the coin. You can go.
I have a new question, so if you want the old one.
I'm sorry. People keep had his hand up.
Yeah, so it's too premature for us to have this conversation.
I I just, I think.
The, the, the public has submitted a petition warrant article, we should go through the process of vetting it. Our, our clerk had already indicated that all the signatures are valid. Should then go to legal counsel for review to see if it passes a legal muster. Allow our superintendent staff to go ahead, research the consequences, the pros, the cons, and then have us prepared at our next meeting for the public hearing in terms of whether or not it goes on. So we can come in at fully informed, we can come up with all the what ifs, the what about this, what about that, our personal opinions. At this point, it really frankly doesn't matter, it's been presented. If it's in good order, we're going to need to act upon it. And then at that point, we can go ahead and we can provide all of our personal thoughts, and that's just my, my take.
Yeah, and my question would be good for Steve to to assemble into what you're saying. And it's just a quick question, if this is only on the ballot in Amherst and Mount Vernon isn't doing this, what happens there? Can.
It's a school district, it'll show up on there.
Oh, so that, yes, we.
Okay, it's a. Yeah, it falls on the school district ballot. Okay.
I was gonna, sorry, what, what is your name, sir? Steve, um, I just want to throw a little piece out there. In actual fact, it doesn't matter if a, if a, a petition is legal or not. If it was voted in, it just might not be able to be enacted on. Yes, just so everybody knows.
Right, yeah.
Um, I just one other consideration on this. Yeah. Okay. There's an opposite effect too, which is well, we, we could, we could go over the 1% increase, but we've got 2%. So we're gonna fight, we're gonna always go, but we're gonna say 2% year over year over year over year of year, and you're never gonna not say never, but there's a risk that you'll never see anything less than that. Unless the Consumer Price Index happened to be less, then you would be forced to be less. So it takes a little bit, can force you up to their maximum and it stops your creative thinking about what are we really doing with the money? What is the, what is the return on the investments that we're trying to make?
But we'll get into those.
So I just want to throw that, there's another challenge there, but it could force everyone to just go for the minimum and stop thinking about anything else. So.
Yeah, I was just gonna quickly respond, you still have, you could still go out and and place any kind of budget with any kind of rationale you have to get the three fifths vote, to put that forward. Um, for instance, in Massachusetts, they have Prop 2 and 1/2 down there, it's been in place for 30 years. You have to do an override if it's over 2 and 1/2, they use 2 and 1/2%, that's why they call it Prop 2 and 1/2. It's been pretty successful over the last 30 years. And even the overrides, you'd be surprised that, how the towns are actually receptive to overrides. They're putting new schools, they've done all sorts of things, even with that Prop 2 and 1/2 in place. So, you know, I I wouldn't say that the the sky's falling or anything like that, but yeah, this is definitely uh introduces more rigor and and a higher bar to to do those sort of things, but it hasn't necessarily stopped uh various jurisdictions to do from doing what they want to do, if I can barely say that.
Great, thanks for the.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will go off our agenda, reports received. Principals report first off. Mike, is there anything you would like to say before?
Uh, just something I wanted to add, like since you kind of like, you know, submitted this, you know, in December, uh uh, just in the conversation with the council office, I thought people would want to know that uh as of November 15th, 87 uh state, applied any recommendations in um transcript set off. Not for any three different schools, but for any. So uh, it's a, it's a pop take, I think it's a sign of the times coming out of the last few years. So that was pretty substantial. And uh, another kind of like highlight in the morning, we talked a little bit about this uh real quick, just shout out to some students who organized the Bang State team and then qualified it in January.
Mm hmm.
Um, and uh, we're, we're pretty excited about that, and that's a big deal.
Yeah.
It's not, it's a challenge.
Yeah. Do you remember the, do you remember the name? I, I saw, I saw it early. It's fat, yeah, it was great, I meant, thank you.
And uh, and the students announced that spotlight, they got some kids is, is and and they came together and I thought that was just really neat. It's just a, it's a, it's not an easy thing to to qualify for. And then I, the things that I would want to kind of highlight uh is the supervision and eval evaluation and and how we keep coming to that. Like it is us getting in the classrooms, us working with with uh with our staff. And Elizabeth is a great example of the work that is happening, you know, between uh the teachers, the teachers at grade level, the grade level um and between uh, you know, teachers and and the administration. So I'm just really pleased with what what's happening, a lot of good things happening. And uh, the report's pretty thorough, but and I'll take any questions if people have. Yeah.
So we'll open up to any questions on the principal's report?
Comment on questions?
I was glad to see that you're involved in community council, back to sound, feel like I'm broke a record a little bit tonight, but in the graduation issues um, or the graduation requirements discussion, I was very happy about that. Um, I didn't know, and I'm hoping they're also at least being consulted somewhat on the grading um questions, because that was the next section about that. And uh, I know, I know they were involved when it was first changed, and I just want to make sure again that they're getting kept in the loop. And other ongoings at the high school, we are hosting the mock, the mock trial invitational this weekend, which I think is, what, 16 teams? Um, so that's happening here all day Saturday, all day Sunday, um, so. Thanks, thanks to the school for letting it happen here and making. Yeah, top of Jazz Night and the music concerts coming up and many things.
Which I wish had been tonight, because I really want.
I know.
Did you add us to an email list?
I believe I did.
Thank you.
I did. Next day, I think, I think. We're good, you, we're glad, I think that was an oversight, I think we were once on it and then like a shift and then
Take the win, baby.
People get kicked off.
It's so good.
Yeah. Any other questions? Dan?
I just uh wanted to know how you were finding some recovery from the lag that kind of happened during COVID, some of the.
Learning loss or academic stamina, uh, I think here, I think this district came out of the, as a whole, K through 12, you know, and I'll speak to Sahegan, but K through 12 better off than most. The way you, the district and the, and the community kind of handled COVID and how we remained in school and in connection. So I, yeah, I think we're in a good spot there. I do think uh. We put some things around grading and reporting with like the grace period and the deadlines and the time to like. Step up like, you know, the buildup capacity in, in this space, you know. And, and the learning commons over here in the info center, you can see after school three to three thirty, there's been a bit of a, uh. And, and, and people not leaving campus as much to stay here. And I think you're smiling because you know it, like it's happening, like, you know, people are like, you're doing their work and, and owning the learning. Um, and uh, I think that's helped us, uh, but I do think it's gonna be a bit of a, a, a journey out of it. I, I don't think it's, it's, it's quite overnight, and so you're gonna see us a little bit of an emphasis on, on some, um, you know, improving writing as, as Elizabeth talked about. And continue to build academic stamina, to put a little bit of interacting with like literature and certain texts and, and, and reading and analyzing, synthesizing and judging. You'll see a little bit more of an emphasis of that. Um, and uh, a, a few more structures, even, you, you know, even if they're short term. To, to, to deal with students, uh, who might not be academically performing or, or, you know, doing what they need, you know. They're becoming the best, you know, students that they can be. So I, I think that. Um, but we're fortunate. I think people have responded well this year. The students were super pleased overall on how students approach their business at South Heagan right now.
I heard that some colleges are seeing increases in remediation. For incoming students.
After.
Because of the, the learning loss. Uh, do you see, how long do you think it takes to recover? That.
I, I think it depends on the district, and I think a lot of research will tell you, you know, three, four, five, six years is, is what people are predicting. Um, that, you know, throughout, uh, you know, uh, a K twelve, you know, continuum. And uh, and so we're trying to accelerate that, you know, by putting some, you know, a bit more structures than South Heagan typically used to, but I think it's kind of like, it's needed. You know, and uh, and so.
So students that are, that are freshmen now may not see full recovery until they're in college.
Yeah, possibly not.
Yeah.
Depending.
It's also just what strategies we use. Mike and I talk a lot, and Christine and I talk a lot about double dose. Can we double up? Like, we're gonna look at some N W data about reading. We have to unpack that, and we have to look at that, because the way you catch up is not the same amount of time. Right, it's double dosing all the way, you know, it's a K twelve strategy. One of the things that's Mike done, Mike's done, and we've done some work with grant money. Um, is, is some, as some ESSR money is to make this place, this sweet of places very active on supporting kids on the continuum. We have a, a semi-retired teacher coming in to work with math, three hours a day, I think.
Yeah, uh, bit more.
But it's a little bit more maybe four hours a day, and, and Mike has, has put a, it's a staff member here who really is a pied piper, making sure this is, uh, so. The structure is in, in choice. Um, but we're also gonna, so there's some learning loss and some executive functioning and some student stuff. But we also have to unpack and look at the kids who are just behind.
Right.
And what are we doing, K, you know, K twelve, and you know, I've had some discussions about how reading at, at Clark Wilkins impacts South Heagan. You know, it really does, because the, the, you know, the, the data is about fourth grade. But, but if you can get it there with this flexible, because beyond that, there's changes in schedules, it's hard to, so. Um, Mike has led a wonderful job about providing more resources. Um, but we're gonna unpack more and look at, it's like, one of my, my goals, look at case study and actually unpack kid by kid. And understand their schedule, understand the services, understand the assessments. My, you know, my, my day job has been a little bit funky this year, but, um, we'll get there.
And, and, and our emphasis on classroom, you know, instruction and, and instructional strategies is to. You know, kind of look at, you know, some tier one, like whole class stuff and how we interact and getting, you know, teachers to understand all their students and. And, and, and determine like when we have to involve like tier two type of. You know, strategies compared to tier three, and you saw a little bit of Katie's work around that, you know, in the previous special ed. So, um, it's definitely a concerted effort, and uh. I, it was predicted, right? Like last year was predicted, and, and so we're trying to, to respond to that.
Speaks the importance of the, what you've been doing with the learning commons and.
Yeah.
All that.
The engagement.
Huge.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, so.
Me too.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Ralph, you have one?
Um, I just definitely wanna agree with everything that everybody just said about the learning commons. I think that it's become just even a wonderful, full community space. Um, Matt has set up activities for students to do, like. Brain teaser activities for students to do in their free time, uh, in that room, and it helps them work together and work on problem solving and it.
I, I, I really think we're on to something with this space and how people grapple with their free time and their free periods and their individual pathways and how they use this. Um, and, and we are, uh, we're beyond pleased, like with year one, right? We're not even through a full semester. And we're beyond pleased with how the students have responded. To having this option. Because it's not required. They're, they're choosing to, and, and that's a culture thing, and, and uh, and that was. Hope, we were hoping for it. Just didn't expect it at this, and so now we're kind of, the, the evolution is looking at ninth grade. As well, so get them to use this space a bit more. It's definitely a hub for tenth, eleventh and twelfth, trying to get some ninth graders and, and we'll, we'll see.
Great work.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
That was a great idea. Any other questions on?
Yeah, well, just on, on the topic, um. What are we doing, if anything, to encourage summer learning, continuous learning? It would have to, obviously, we don't have school in the summer except for some limited programs, but. Informing families that BLAC's options are available, encouraging participation in that. You wanna get ahead, you wanna catch up, you, you know. Where are you on the achievement scale? Um, but that's always something that student can take a class or two over the summer and either catch up or, or start soaring ahead, right?
Yeah, I'm with you. I think we have to look at, and, and you may see in the coming times, some recommendations about, we used to call the summer the fifth quarter.
Yeah.
Right, because time, we have to do something with time, and, and summer for some is an opportunity for intensive work to catch up or to extend. I agree with you. I think, I think the summer for lots of people is of time that can really make a difference for kids, not just here, but everywhere.
Yeah.
To look at differently. We do a great summer, I think, extensive summer reading program here, and we have extended school year, we have Title One. But I think there's other ways to look at, we, we've had discussions and we didn't, we didn't yet put them in budget for, right? But, um, I do, I think that's an untapped place. When we're looking at some kids who with four weeks of intensive, three hours every other day, maybe get some growth there. Um, and that doesn't take out of other classes that they may love, right? It's focused. So I think you're right. I think summer is an untapped place. To do some catch up work for kids, not just here, K twelve.
Yeah, and I, you will, after the program of studies, that process is done, you're gonna, you have to turn our attention and, and probably put something on the agenda. Uh, in, in, you know, uh, March, April. Uh, you know, for this group to kind of grapple with what we're thinking about it, and, and uh, and so we're not quite there yet, but we, both of you and, and it's on our, 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 you know, uh. You know, on our things to do list, you know.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Anything else? Oh, Mike, I just wanna say thank you to you and your staff and. Just the representation of the professional work being done is phenomenal. So thank you. Appreciate it. All right, uh, any questions on treasures reporter facilities?
Mr. Preston asked me to make sure I plugged the entrance with the South Heagan.
The new sign.
Yes.
That's the main entrance sign.
And Roger gets mad at me if I don't do what he tells me to do. Um, if you can just make sure on the way out, or if you see him, say, yep, Steve said it and I saw it, it'd be great.
There's a new sign, if that's right outside the visitor parking, going towards the main, if you walk, we're going to walk towards the main entrance, there's a nice brand new sign that points you in the right direction. Yes. Uh, okay, um. Nothing there, let's go on to consent agenda. Um, I'm just gonna start off with number one questions. Can someone discuss the NEWA fall results, please?
Sure.
I'm sure everyone has questions on those.
Sure, as, as you can see, I wrote up in, in, in the notes for the board, the, the growth, um, for the math K twelve is very strong, ninth, remember ninth grade is eighth grade performance and tenth grade is ninth grade performance. Um, like to see that, um, that we have achieved the expected growth. Um, and, but as I also alluded to previously, um, we've got to take a look at, uh, LA, the reading, we have to unpack this a little bit more. Um, there is a gap between where we, where we'd expect our youngsters to be in the growth and, and the second chart. And, um, last year, um, when I was a, a little bit different, I started having discussions with Dana and Mike and the reading staff last year about. For example, what are, with kids who are coming here from the middle school. Who aren't yet on grade level, what is the approach? How do we, um, you know, how do we assess? How do we diagnose these youngsters? What sub skills are we working on? And then I'm a firm and strong believer in double dose. The way you catch up kids is twice as much time of evidence and research-based practices. And how does that impact the high school schedule? When we want kids to participate in classes that they, they're engaged in and love, you know, and really enjoy. Um, but we started that process last year, we've had some staffing changes, but Mike and I have talked about this, about getting people together, unpacking this and find out. What sub skill and what is the profile and what are the services that are happening with reading? Because we have to make sure our youngsters are on grade level reading. This has to be the place. That eighty, ninety percent of kids are on grade level every. We have the resources, we have the profile, we have it, it's, we just have to take a look at our structures and we have to unpack it, and this is. Again, this, this is, it's tenth grade and ninth grade, but it's not a ninth grade issue, it's not an eighth grade issue. And, and this isn't blame, this is just trying to figure it out. And, um, and Christine and I, I think one of the things that we've talked about most this year is reading and trying to figure it out. Um. So, uh, I, this is the work I, I love. And, and even though I was a math person, as you know, there's nothing more important than getting youngsters reading, because reading is in school and it is in the future. So this is, this is great information for us to know. Um, it is, um. Creating, we, we have a sense of urgency about literacy, about reading in this place. Mike and I do, Christine and I do, but we're gonna unpack this with reading staff, with Katie, um, and Danny and dig and see what's going on, kid by kid.
Can I just follow up? So I know that. NEWA, these reports show growth.
Yep.
My question always comes down to, and this comes to the, what we were talking about, take, having ninth, tenth grades take PSAT. Whether we swap it out or whatever, but what you can look at growth. But this doesn't mean they're on grade level. It could be they're two grade levels behind and they grew, but now they're still a grade level behind. So I would love to understand if they're even on grade level.
Yeah.
We do have a projected proficiency, um, it takes N W E A and there's linking study fund projecting, um. How students will do on future assessments such as F A T.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and E C T. So we do have that data as well.
Because, because then that'll come down to also the question which we talked about at the workshop, was do we look at just having the kids all take P S A T? Ninth grade, tenth grade, S A T, eleventh grade, and that shows grade level and we know catch up anyway.
Right.
So we'll have, we'll have to have that discussion that, I don't know if that's gonna come up in our budget.
No, I mean, it, it's.
It's not, it, it turns out there wouldn't probably be a budget impact because we're swapping one test for the other.
And so it's difficult to make that decision reactionary right now.
Correct.
But it, there's something for us to look at long term about our assessment profile and what I want, what's best for kids. Um, but we have some flexibility, we have to look. Um, but when it was last year when I sat with the reading specials, it, we, we were talking about. Student by student, how do we make sure every youngster gets, gets where we need them to? That work continues, it's just a little bit funky.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else have questions on NEWA? No, okay. Um. What's the other ones? Uh, on item number two, humanities curriculum, are, do people wanna actually look at approving that tonight, or do we wanna pull that out?
Let's pull for next.
We'll, we'll pull that out.
No problem at all.
Okay, the consent agenda. I wanna say thank you to the, where is it? The donation, the Rapp family. For their donation for their art department, that's quite amazing. What was given.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very generous.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Prior teacher.
Very, very generous.
Yes. Uh, any comments on the minutes? The November tenth minutes or the November fifteenth? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agendas, items one, three, four, and five, pulling out number two?
Second.
All right, so first and second in, can, well, we don't need roll call, that's right, we're all here. So those in favor? Anyone opposed? None opposed, so that will pass. Uh, community council update, Ralph. Lots going on in community council.
Uh, so community council has, since we last met, uh, passed one proposal. Uh, basically committing a vice position for our student activities coordinator. Uh, that person is elected by community council to basically be in charge of student activities that are run by community council. Um, this includes Fang Fest, it includes some holiday, uh, events, uh, Claus for a Cause, the homecoming game, uh, that was also helped in part by SAC. Um, they, now there will be two of them. Uh, they will lead the student activities committee that is a part of community council and the general community. Uh, and hopefully they will be able to share that responsibility. I know that, uh, some. In the past few years, uh, there's been some difficulty with navigating that position, because we've had some younger members of council who have been elected and maybe not had. Had as much experience, and then we just had people who had that position for so long, and all of a sudden they graduated, and we don't know what to do. Um. So hopefully this will bring a bit of. A bit more accountability to that, that position. Um, next week, we will be discussing. A, uh, proposal brought by administration. Asking to use weighted GPAs. Sorry, I had the meeting earlier today and I'm recalling everything. Uh, asking to use weighted GPAs rather than unweighted GPAs, uh, for the class of twenty twenty-three and beyond. Uh, for the determination of valedictorian and soliditorian.
Hmm.
Uh, this was something that was discussed last year in community council, but we felt that we should probably discuss it this year, because the last graduating class didn't have weighted GPAs. Um, and then there's also another proposal on the docket. I, uh, wrote a proposal. Combining the community review board and the judiciary board, which are two student-run disciplinary, uh. Basically, alternative boards that, uh, students can seek. Judgment from their peers on disciplinary actions. They've been largely inoperable for the past few years, uh, and I'm seeking to fix that. We don't really need two boards for this function. They serve largely the same purpose, so I'm gonna be seeking, uh, to just make them back into one organization.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Those will be coming in probably next month, month and a half.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have questions for Ralph? So Ralph, not a question so much, but thank you for your report. Thank you for your work. Thank you for being our member. Um. We discussed in, um, policy committee this week. That R C one ninety-four twenty-three F. Requires us to have a student body board member. So that's great, but required to be elected by a simple majority vote of the high school student body.
Yeah, uh, that never ended up getting amended. Uh, I know that was mentioned.
Yeah, so.
Process.
And you all are the ones that are supposed to put that in place and get that. I mean, it does empower you to do that. So I wasn't here when that was discussed last year, but that's something that's getting worked on?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, I took note of that, and I'm, I'm talking with our, uh, faculty advisor, Tony DeSau.
Okay, I was tasked with pass it on to community council, um, because it wasn't really, it wasn't really a policy committee thing, but we just wanna make sure that we're, you know, following and getting the election part of that right, so.
Bye.
Thanks. All right, any other questions for community council?
Uh, so I, I believe, uh, the position of the school board liaison is elected at the end of, uh, the school year for the next coming school year. So it's.
By community council.
Yeah, by community council. Um. So freshmen don't really get to vote on it, but other than that. Yeah, I, I think this would.
They, all the executive board and. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to pull it out, because. Yeah, the new state law went in.
And it can be a different position, you could have a school board liaison position, community council, or you, and you could have a student rep. I'm not advocating either way.
That's something that I, I will bring to the bylaws committee of, committee council, and. I'll work that out with them. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Hey, huh, up next, oh, facility skylight project. Amy, are you presenting that or Steve? You wrote them, yes. Yes, I was gonna present it.
Do all the community, committee updates on them?
Did we, did I skip something?
Committee.
Oh, committee updates. Oh, we could do community updates first.
Sure. Sorry, did I miss you out?
Yeah, no.
Happy to talk skylights, or we.
Nope, we, we can go, we can go do community updates, uh, committee updates. So one thing before we start committee updates. Um, I just wanna give a quick report on our board goals, because we said we would update that every once in a while, so. We were talking about doing that tonight. So quickly, uh, communication was, the board will increase communication with the community at large, and I'd say with us trying to do the community listening sessions, we've successfully had. Three of them so far, and we're gonna plan another one in Amherst in January, after the public hearing, to make sure people have a chance of feedback. I don't know if. Mount Vernon feels the need, what your feedback was, or what your gut feel is.
Probably not good. I think when you think of like the next one. Something that we successfully adopted in Mount Vernon, this approach. Budget.
Mm-hmm.
And so it would be like the, the motivation for the air library, we did ours. Through the P T A at the village school.
Mm-hmm.
We had thirty-five of the show.
So you do it outside of public, of public hearing? So you do it outside of public, of public hearing? And it's, that's my, it's my thought for the January one, because it'll be after public hearing and we can all. This is what it's gonna be about as a topic. So I think it makes sense to do in both towns. Hundred percent. Great, so we will continue working it towards our goal in January. Um instructional time. And the board will set instructional time as a priority while maintaining so he can high schools unique focus on developing the whole person. I would say, based on a lot of the work that administration is accomplishing, I'm. Feeling that it is become a priority and achieving, you know, good quality instruction, student engagement. So I think we're working towards that. I don't know if anyone has any other input, but I. Feel like our focus has been student engagement, which includes strong instruction time. Um I know one of the things that was in. The humanities, what, or is it Mike's, Mike's? Principals report. It says leadership is second only to classroom instruction as an influence and student learning. Um so, you know, combining strong leadership with good instruction practice increases student engagement should increase better outcomes. That's our hope. So seeing that in there, so there's definitely focus is how I'm. Seeing things.
I have a question about instructional time. There was some discussion previously about your. Uh Mike and Steve guys looking at. The calendar and. What our historical commitments have been and what our future commitments maybe should be. There's some things we might wanna keep, some things we might wanna. Ditch or change or modify so that it maximizes instructional time. Those were, you know, I mean. Weeks during the school year that are sometimes off or maybe a little less productive were part of that. The P D hours and late starts, or maybe is it, do you in the morning, do you do it in the in the evening, like depending? So those are a few of the considerations and I I don't know if there's a. Where the status of that thinking is, or if you have an estimate about when we might have a discussion about that.
Mike is reviewing traditions and and norms and trying to balance, right, and really trying to keep. The the most significant traditions, but always with an eye of instructional time. Um this spring, we're gonna pilot to um. Uh and early releases. Um for students in February and March. Um usually instead of the late start to see how that is for the community. Um we're also taking a look at the model of half day, you know, or reduced school day and P D. That whole model is is a one day. You know, a six-hour day better than a two-hour day, you know, for three, because. There's no question that when you take two hours out of a day, it disrupts instructional time. So. Um we're taking a look at all these. Uh some of them are pretty complicated because there's a. Collective bargaining agreements in different communities and some have it, but. Um you know, Mike and I have had discussions about what, you know, what do we keep? Um and it's hard, as we talked about it with the one seventy-five, one seventy calendar. It's 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 more sense of urgency when you start below. And then you just have to make sure that if it is a senior trip that's climbing Manana, or if it is. A, you know, a ropes course day, but you just make sure it's gonna be extremely valuable because the time is really valuable.
Yes.
Uh Mike is auditing every piece and. And having real important conversations with people about making sure the big thing is the big thing. What's the big thing? But I appreciate the reminder and and I think we had every other report to. Make sure we're reporting, reporting out which ones we're keeping, which ones we're not, so.
And as you um, as you think about, well, maybe. If you, if you think you're kinda aware of your decision is, I mean, I even encourage you to share that with the the board members. So that we have an opportunity to provide you feedback before. You know, it it's just part of that discussion. Um it'll enhance our public debate and then. We may agree or disagree, and that's not really the point. The best point is really to share the information, take the feedback. And come up with your your best recommendation based on that and then let the chips fall where they may.
And. And as you just said, Stephen, it is a long game. Because um sometimes contracts come up. You know, collect, because most uh most. You know, instructional time days is part of the working conditions, which is a item for negotiations with the collective board. So if you were in a, if you're in a couple of year contract. Um it's just a long game and everything's gonna be aligned. It's a fast, I like this actually, I like the notion of. The Monverden approach, the Amherst approach, is how we can approach it, trying to align them and move this place forward in one. Unison, but it's pretty complicated, but it's uh and it's not boring.
Just remember that. You, just because a collective bargaining agreement exists doesn't stop one party from. Requesting an addendum. Um based on a reasonable request. And it doesn't mean that the other party can be, used to view that as a time to extract a pound of flesh, just for something that's reasonable. Uh I've been, I've been on the other side, I mean, on the board's side, receiving requests from collective bargaining unit. And it was a reasonable request and it was, was agreed to mid. Uh contract. I don't remember what the specific detail was, those were the dynamics and it was, it was, it made sense for them. It wasn't a big cost for the, for the community. And it made the relationship stronger, so. You know, I would just keep that in mind that. Talking to each other, just because there's a collective bargaining unit, doesn't mean that you're constantly fighting each other.
What's very heartening for me. To be invested in this profession of public education. Have seventeen board members, I think unanimously support instructional time. It is a priority for all boards that I work with, all people I work with that they care deeply about what happens. I'm very grateful for that. That it resonates in this place and it's a priority in all the boards and all the discussions. That makes my job, the next person's job a lot easier, because it is a priority, it is valued. And I know. If I was coming to work as a teacher, I would know that the boards in this S A U. And I like that message and I appreciate that message. As your interim superintendent, it's very heartened to me. That this, this, these people around this table care deeply about what happens in that classroom. Make sure they have the support, resource, and professional development to do that. I think that is the most important message we can send. What you do matters. This board and all the boards I work with consistently reinforce that for me, I appreciate.
While we're on instructional time, does this include considering the seven-period versus eight-period day? Because I've had, had it expressed to me that especially for A P classes where we have a shorter school year. They're already kind of behind in in instruction time. And um going to an eight-period day took ten minutes out of each period, which means almost an hour a week. Less. Over the course of the school year per class.
Yeah, um. That that's part of a longer, yeah, that definitely is on the table. You know, they, that switched to seven to eight-period day was done. For a number of reasons. Um and one of the things that we are taking a look at, like in. With our students, giving them choice to use the program of studies to come to this school to take advantage of what they want. For me, one, a part of this analysis of the seven-day period, you know, specifically for eight-period days, comes down to. How many kids are taking the test? You know, and and that's one of the first questions we ask. And we have some data that we can look at to say. Hey, there, there could be not as many kids taking the test. Because of various reasons. And so A P might not be as strong of a reason to to take a hard look at the instructional. You know, time in class. Um I also think there's some practices that we have around like breaks and. You know, students being in and out of classes that we have to take alike and like some urgency when we're in school. So it's multifaceted that we have to look at, but. Absolutely, when we made the shift from seven periods to eight periods day, it was very well, you know, people were at this table, were in those conversations, very well thought out. Um a lot of input from students and families and teachers and former, and we didn't do it casually, but as we take a look at. The eight-thirty to three start, you know, school day, the seven to eight shift. The late starts, it is gonna be like a whole kind of like encompassing package that we are taking a look at. Um along with the calendar year. You know, and uh so I definitely, I hear you, I hear that from teachers, and we're definitely gonna take that into consideration. Um and it it is complex. I think Sohagen is is not unique in the sense that it has complex offerings, but it's unique that. How they use time. Throughout the calendar year and during the day and. You know, during the month. It it all has to factor into that, and so.
And I'm sure we can continue the conversation when we have the discussions about. Start time and hear the survey results, because that could influence. What our thoughts are a little bit as well. But yeah, it's a bigger conversation that will need to be placed on the agenda, I think, for a separate.
I mean, we go from seven to eight and we're still only require four periods. Teachers teach four periods a day, so it's. You know. Some concern there that may go to the B P C that. Consider later.
There will be further discussions. So well, yeah, that that'll be for a longer discussion. Quick one.
Along these, along these same lines, as we're looking at.
Batteries down.
As we're talking about um replanning instructional time, which I'm fully in support of. I do hope we also kind of try to balance, I mean, there are a lot of things about Sohagen, like. Senior projects that maybe, and we've talked about this a little bit, maybe there's a different way to do that, so there's less interruption. Schoolwide, but I hope we're not.
I would hate to see us start just losing those things. Having those things just be like, okay, yeah, we're not doing this anymore. We just, you know, because those things, those things were valuable and and I'm hoping that we're just considering that as we go through. We're including P P C, we're looking at maybe ways we can do things smarter. And with less interruption as opposed to getting rid of those valuable pieces that were kind of, you know, unique and special and and meaningful, I think. Parts of the curriculum here.
Yes. Okay. So the, so the third goal. And it goes in with all this, the board will increase their understanding of aspirational and taught curriculum, which is exactly what we're doing, the presentations we're doing. Each period is like, like this evening's humanities. So I think overall, we are doing well on our board goals. Um. So any other committee updates? I'm just gonna go quickly, you can say yea or nay, athletics. C I P. Expendable trust. I'll come back to you. J um J fac. Anything on J fac that's. We haven't discussed. Communications, Steven.
So uh. Tim and I had the pleasure of meeting with some of our community members um last month. Uh Donuts Coffee at the Firehouse, it was actually pretty cool. Um a full hour and a half of uh feedback. And Tim and I ran it more like a focus group than just hey mingle in mingle out and. We got some great feedback about us and then an awful lot of feedback about the village school. So I focused on just the feedback about us. Um uh the first piece of uh advice, um and I will call it advice, because I think that's. In in the method it was presented, um was let our high school seniors march in our uh spring gala parade. And I was hoping Rock would still be here, because I think that's something that could be done through community council and I'll talk with our Monverden and community council uh. Uh representative, or maybe Christie could bring it up. Um just encouraging those guys to participate with our rec department as they plan the parade and it's a big event to Monverden. Uh to sort of do a natural sort of send off. Um like it's a a great idea. Um get the honor roll uh published uh back out to the community uh or provided somewhere online, so people in the community can understand. Um some of the neighborhood kids that may be doing really well. Uh and I know there should maybe some privacy issues concerning there, so I'll let you guys deal with that, but that was a piece of feedback. Um if we don't wanna put it online somewhere, we can put it at our library, so somebody can actually stop in and 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 visit it.
Yeah, the honor only happens at the end of the school year now, right? Because of the rolling grades.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Continue the newsletter updates uh with letting the community members know about events at the high school uh that they're invited to. Um so we communicated uh a couple of months ago about making sure that you guys are aware of a. Modern newsletter run through our rec department uh through the board of selectmen that gets pushed out to over five hundred people. Uh in our community, making sure that, hey, the Veterans Day event. Um that was pushed out through through that uh that form. Um maybe the Jazz Night tonight, we could have pushed something like that out uh into that. Hey, come uh visit a really awesome display for, from our music department next Wednesday during our chorus concert, stuff like that. Community bits of information that community members are are clearly invited to that are above and beyond what parents would be invited. Um and then the next one kind of correlates well with it is allow uh non-parents to participate in our newsletter that goes out. Uh on a weekly basis. Um the one that you send out on Fridays. Uh create a structure or system where parents or community members can sign up uh to receive principal updates. Um in in a push format that's apart from Nixle or Snow Day updates. So we don't wanna actually find out that, you know, the kids are getting the day off from school because. I'm a senior, I don't really have that type of desire to know, but I would love to sort of see what the, what, what, what the high school is doing. I don't think we'd have a huge demand for that, but it's just another forum to uh to engage. Um feedback paths that are offered on a quarterly basis from community members. Um let the administration meet with community members to receive feedback directly. Uh that was a a bit of information that came back. Um get the calendar on the front of our S A U website. Uh that was definitely feedback provided by uh multiple people there. Um it's a little confusing the structure that it is right now in terms of the way it's designed, so maybe we can streamline that, so it's a little bit easier to understand the stuff that's actually coming up. Um whether it be a a board meeting, whether it be a budget committee meeting, uh or one of the events going on at the high school. Um better communication from S A U office about how they operate, how they're working to better our schools. That was a feedback, maybe uh uh one of our community forums, we invite our superintendent up there to meet and engage with uh with feedback from that perspective. Um and then they love the idea of academic success being recognized by the community. And they're looking forward to uh the athletic parades. Um we're looking forward to our first uh Monverden student of the month, so we can get that sandwich named after him. So stuff like that is uh was 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 well received. Um and then um having district meetings is the part that is on us now. Uh having our district meeting specifically our deliberative session, and Tim's gonna laugh here because it was right to the point. Um keeping the fluff out of the presentation, get exactly to the point. Um uh of 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 the uh the piece, allow all the qualitative stuff to be provided in a handout in advance. And then jump right into the meat and potatoes of what the budget is. Um looking for simple language uh and to keep it short. Right, so that was uh. Feedback that Tim and I received very directly, and uh they are not looking for an hour-long presentation by the superintendent. Uh about all the things that are going well in those types of forms. So that was the community members, uh Tim and I are looking forward to engaging uh at a future event and then working with you guys to see if we can set up some uh. Uh some, some more direct stuff.
Okay, no, that's fantastic feedback. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. And I think we'll, we'll discuss on incorporating some of that. Coming up and. Engage the community.
It won't be an hour speech from you.
Done, okay. Um. The other two, P P C um had a couple of really good meetings where Anna's been covering the policies that directly affect them. So working through, it's just ten policies and we've made it through six. Six, so there's more to come. So once though they go through that, it'll come to the board and we'll discuss what it is. A lot of it, some of it's just easy. Renaming, some of it's some other little detail work, which everyone has been in really great discussion for, so. Um I think that's been going well. And then policy committee, do you wanna update us?
Yeah, I love going to P P C and discussing policies, because they're really, really thoughtful and they see. All sides and it's really interesting to see the discussion, so yeah, it's my new favorite thing. So we've been to two of those. I'm in, I get to come to the next one and eventually we'll have those back for you all. Policy had a meeting on. Wednesday, I don't know. For Christine and I, the last two weeks, I think, are becoming a blur. So, yeah, yesterday, I guess. God, it was yesterday and ran through and and Christine did all the heavy lifting for this one, fortunately ran through basically everything that had come in. From the School Board Association that we needed to look at. We figured out what we need to prioritize and does need to get reviewed, what can stay in the regular kind of rotation. Because we have them all in a set, we're gonna review these ones this year. So that's for the next meeting. Um so that's moving ahead. And then just as a real quick update. Superintendent, I know this word, we're just a small part of that, but I am your representative to the superintendent. Screening committee, so we met twice, two evenings last week. Screening committee, so we met twice two evenings last week. And then we did interviews Monday, Tuesday and tonight. And interviews are done. Um, we meet again tomorrow. Um, it's been a really long week, um, but so that's moving right along and those obviously will be coming forward to the, to the full board with those recommendations were done, but. It's, it's, it's been very busy, um, but a lot of work and a lot of, lot of. Yeah, it's exciting, we're looking forward to bringing that to you.
Great.
Um, I have a cou- couple of questions for one on the superintendent and one on policy, unfortunately I couldn't make it yesterday. Um, the superintendent screening committee, um, would you? Try to um. Communicate the decision-making processes of the committee members for people who are not making the cuts, you know, we have these, these nodes where certain group of people aren't going to. Make it out of that committee to be presented to us, I would appreciate knowing, you know. What the thinking is of the committee members so that I feel comfortable supporting those decisions.
So I'm not sure. I can discuss that.
Correct.
Fully and non-public.
And I. He asked that question at the last SA, or I know you'd ask that question.
Start question in email of.
Yes.
The chair of that committee, but I, but you were the representative and I don't, you're on the record that I've asked that question.
I wasn't asking that question.
Oh, you were the rare that I asked, okay.
So, I mean, I can tell you that very, very generally, I think I can, I think I, I'll tell you what I feel comfortable saying. Very generally, we met with Kenda Benedictus. And, you know. Discussed in detail everyone, you know, and and who did we want to bring forward and why? Um. Those people have been brought forward, we meet with him. Um. You know, there's twelve of us. So I can't, even if I could. I couldn't tell you like this is why this or this didn't, I mean, it's it's getting done in a very kind of um. To some extent, almost a. I mean, I just, I'm really not, I'm not sure what I'm allowed to say in public, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm not.
Not her place to say.
A deeply fewer right now in public.
Thing, like, okay, and then so this, this is the, this is the top group and then they're moving forward, that's the best way I can kind of explain it. Taking in everybody's inputs because everybody has very different, see I'm looking at you, if I, if you've got something to add, he'll put it.
Well, can I, can I just cut us off a second though? I would say, John, I would wait until our SAU meeting where we're discussing the superintendent. Search information and then we'll see what information we get.
That's totally fine, I, what I.
Process and everybody's got different things that they think about, I mean.
So I think it's been noted, so I think it's been noted of your request.
Yeah.
And then I think.
I wasn't looking for a discussion of it here. Obviously, we're talking about the people's reputation names, we have to do that in non-public.
Okay.
I wasn't looking for the explanation.
Alright, we're. Yep.
That's all, and then who's on the policy subcommittee? To review the procedures and process over this.
Me, Josh Conklin and um. Oh my God, Sarah Lawrence, thank you. I was forgetting her last name, I was like Sarah, Sarah, Sarah's last name.
Yes. Okay.
And does that meeting, does that subcommittee have a meeting schedule yet?
We have a, we are having a. I don't know if it's a meeting. Um, we are gonna talk with Meg Beauchamp just generally about can she explain to us what normally happens? You know, like in a Title IX outside of this situation, so we can make sure.
I'll just say, do you have a schedule? Do you have a schedule, just answer that.
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna have a, we're, we've got a, we've got a, a Zoom, I guess, with our, our discussion with her, so that we can be educated and then we're going from there.
Okay, and um, are those, are yours, it's like subcommittees meetings public?
I.
I would assume so.
I would assume so, but we haven't, I mean, as I said, right now, we're, we're just having this. You know, help us get updated on this and then um, we're gonna kind of discuss amongst ourselves. Generally, I mean, at a meeting if we meet. But um, kind of what are our different thoughts on what could have been, you know, what happened, what didn't happen.
Right, right, I, yeah, appreciate that, that you're gonna be doing that thinking, I just wanted to know if people in community who are in, some have taken an interest. And if they wanted to participate or listen at least and and be a part of those meetings, will they be able to do so, will there be? Um, will these be meetings on Zoom where people can zoom in or will they be held at the brick school, people will be properly noticed and people can come if they want? That's really what I want to know.
So I have, I have.
They have to be posted meetings, they have to be posted.
Have to be posted meetings, right, so and they'll be what on the?
So yeah, so they would go, if they have to discuss somebody other than a board member.
And they would go into.
Comfortable, they would have to go into non-public.
Okay, good.
They would have to run it like a meeting.
So can.
With minutes.
Could I ask the um, Steve and your team to make sure that that schedule is readily available uh, on the SEU website?
Yes, and thank you for that, I make sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Right now, I don't think we have the January one, do we?
Um, Abby was working on it yesterday, I did not check in with her today.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, um, so it's committees, so when I will move on to the skylight project.
Sure, um, yes. So I just, where we are, um, it's December. Uh, in working with the vendor in order to get the skylights ordered in time for summer install. Um, the, the goal is to get this approved by the board in the first week of January. Uh, Amy and I spent a lot of time talking about the public hearing process for withdrawal from a trust. And the board has been, uh, you know. Designated, right, they can expend the funds, but we believe, Amy and I believe that especially in this place where transparency is so. To have a public hearing at the onset of this project. And which I think will be the custom going forward, so in the past, we've kind of caught up with public hearings at the end, but the concern is. We do the project and then in June, we have a public hearings and said, no, don't, don't go with Calwall, but then the, right, toothpaste is out of the tube. So, um, all the data that there is, Amy's done a great job, uh, we have all the right bids and and we were going to use DEW to construction man in this project, this is not. Uh, it's a Roger oversee, but not every day, right, it's it's over three hundred thousand dollars, it's cranes, right, it's skylights, it's subs, it's a lot of people coming in, so DEW will manage this project, they will bid out the sub components like they do as a construction. It was the same company that did the front end, uh, the entrance last summer. This isn't an in-house project, right, this is very complicated. Um, so this is to, and and we're gonna talk a little bit about January's schedule, but with the board's approval. On January third, we have a public hearing prep session. And after that, we will have a meeting, we will have some, might have some work to do, but at that meeting, we'll have a public hearing. Uh, and and talk about withdrawing being approval to withdraw funds up to three hundred and thirteen?
Three thirteen, I think.
Up to three thirteen is the purpose of the Skylights project. And then that will be the, and we're also gonna do some FY twenty-two stuff, some cleanup stuff, but going forward. We will have a a public hearing about withdrawal funds at the onset of the project, not at the end of the project, picking up what I'm putting down.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
Um, so with the board's approval and and I talked to Roger. Um, January, January third, I was gonna say snow, but I'm not gonna say snow, as long as January third happens, we're in good shape. Um, there, as long as they get noticed by January sixth, they feel very confident this can be a summer project. Um, so really, it was tonight just to make sure everybody's on the same page and make sure, okay, on the January post, uh, public, uh. Yeah, it's, it's public hearing prep, but also public hearing. You with me?
The public hearing for this, the public hearing prep for the budget warrants.
Right.
That was better said than be, that was, I was trying to say that.
Okay.
Yes.
So nothing to do now, we'll wait on these messages until January.
We're gonna give you the same memo.
Okay.
Um, it was just, we, we couldn't do the public hearing tonight, obviously, cuz we didn't do the week, the posting seven clear days.
Right.
And we still have a shot in January third because we have you to come in together anyway.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be all perfect and we're gonna make sure the posting is in the paper and we will do this. Uh, for all of the ones ahead of time.
Always good to have information more than once, so. That's okay. Um, alright, so we'll discuss the skylights more in January if.
Yep.
When that public hearing happens, okay. Um. So he can finance committee, do you want to present now, do you want to hear Amy's? Budget update first, or do you want to give your feedback as where you stand at this point?
Um, I'd rather wait to hear Amy's.
Amy's presentation first.
And then I can.
Okay. Alright, so we will move into. Amy. Basie presenting our draft three, alright.
Hold on. Oh, we did that. Hold on there. Right?
Yeah, go to the beginning. Perfect, alright, you can go right to the next slide. We're gonna dive right into the budget review. You can go to the next slide. So, good news, your budget from uh, draft two to draft three has decreased. Uh, so we talked at the workshop about we had budgeted some. Um, folks who are retiring, we were gonna take a look and budget them at. The equivalent of a master's seven, so the equivalent on the PPC schedule. So by doing that, we had um, a a nice reduction in salary and benefits of fifty-seven thousand. Um, we also, uh, I meet regularly with Crystal, um, our food service director and. We originally had thirty thousand budgeted as a potential transfer. So we took a look at where we are year to date, that our um, national school lunch program application was approved, so we're able to submit our claims. And we're, you know, it's early, but we're looking pretty good um, for Sohagen, so. Yeah, she, uh, having her in places has really helped, she keeps a tight. Look on our expenditures and our revenues and we're feeling okay, so in talking with Steve. We felt comfortable in um, reducing that food service transfer uh, to fifteen thousand. So, our, yeah, so our.
Fifteen in there.
There is, there is, and you, we can always use fund balance if we. Yeah, if we need to, so. Um. So yeah, so good news is we're down um, a little over seventy-two thousand from draft two. So this just shows that uh, resulting change, so we're at a two point seven percent total budget increase. Uh, point one percent of that is the FY twenty-three to uh, FY twenty-four default. And two point six of that is from the FY twenty-four default to the FY twenty-four proposed. And this just. Shows that point one percent um, change from the FY twenty-three. Uh, adopted budget to the FY twenty-four default, so that's your default calculation. We take the FY twenty-three adopted, remove the special warrant article for the turf. There's some very small one-time expenditures, I think it's new equipment. Uh, in tech. Uh, adjust because we need to fund uh. Student services, a lot of that is uh, an increase in. Um, special ed transportation. Um, the, there's a, an increase in the SEU assessment that the board, the SEU board approved. Um, we have a reduction in salaries and employer benefits. Um, those are positions that still haven't made it into the default, um, because we're still operating on uh, FY twenty-two. Uh, small food service adjustment. And then the other is, is a contractual obligation, so that's your total change, so total change of seventeen thousand eight fifty-one. Then the proposed budget, um. Which. Is, which goes from the FY twenty-four, four uh, default to the FY twenty-four proposed. Uh, so that curriculum is mostly um, salaries, you know, we did budget for. Um, some technology. Um, which lands in the curriculum side, something we've talked about working on for next year, but. Um, and also some uh, substitute. Uh. Increases that we've, we've seen, so we felt we needed to budget for those. Facilities that is primarily the uh, increased position. Uh, that's proposed as well as utilities and other maintenance costs. Athletics, that's primarily the um. The change from the contracted. Um. Trainer, thank you. Student services, that's that small amount that's really sort of admin student services that we discussed at the budget workshop. Um, food service is down, transportation. Um, is down, technology and admin, so our total. Um, increase is the five eleven eight forty. Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
Inter- interject a question.
Yeah.
About the uh, and this is just for my understanding.
Yep.
So the athletics. Uh, amount, that's for us to hire a full-time trainer so that we have stability and there's always good things.
Yep.
And we're already paying for a contracted. Um, trainer.
Yep.
So the default budget includes the contract for the trainer.
Mm-huh.
So we have, and if so, the, so. We're gonna have a trainer, if, what we want is to replace that with a full-time person.
Yeah.
What? What, do you know, off the top of your head, or we can maybe discuss this later, but might, might, might be a nice slide as we're doing public hearings and deliberative sessions to show that, okay, look. Here's an example of how this stuff works, we have this, it's costing us X. Here's why we wanna shift that around to keep the same person, there's all these benefits and actually we're saving money or it's negligibly more expensive.
It is costing more cuz we're paying retirement, New Hampshire retirement.
Then, then at least that's your transparent and we can just say, okay, so we're, we're wanting to agree to invest. Whatever the difference is in the stability for, you know, health and care of our students.
Right.
And there, there it is, that's how it works in the budget, I'd love to see that on a, as an example in the deliberative.
Yeah.
In the public presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Yep. Yep. That's okay, and then this just breaks um. These same, the, the same information out by the advisory finance committee categories. Um. We've kind of gone over a lot of the, the changes. So now we just, uh, we spent, spent some time on revenue, this is just our first blush at this, um, so we'll continue to refine information. Over the next two uh, two months prior to getting to um, public hearing and deliberative. But. I'll just, I have three slides and they progress, so. Um. I, hoping this is a good way for, to present to the board and then you can take a look and see how you want to present for public hearing. But basically, I started with calculating. Um, the projected revenue and taking a look at FY twenty-three revenue. FY twenty-four revenue and then the difference. So, to do that, we, we take a look at the, the major um, funds, so food service is one fund. Uh, the revenue from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, it doesn't change a whole lot. Um, so that is the amount of, that is budgeted as an expenditure and then it's just offset um, in revenue because food service. Really acts as its own small little entertra- enterprise business. Um, grants, same thing, those are budgeted as an expenditure. And then the exact same amount is budgeted as revenue, so even though it's, we have. An increase in revenue, we also have an increase in expense, so that's offset. Um, the other federal, state and local, that's a variety of things, um, that's your special education aid. Um, we have tuition, um, there's interest income. Um, there's uh, any Medicaid that we may get reimbursement for, so in FY twenty-three. We also had an additional amount of revenue that came back from the state from New Hampshire retirement. So that was kind of a rebate, um, and so that's an increase, it was unexpected, an increase in FY twenty-three. Revenue that we won't see in FY twenty-four. Um, I did uh, project some Medicaid reimbursement and looking back last year at what we received. Uh, I, I did uh, fifty percent of that just to be conservative, but. Hopefully expecting to um, to receive that in FY twenty-four and Medicaid reimbursement.
Can I just ask you, is that higher than we normally estimate for revenue for Medicaid?
Last year, we received um, seventy-six thousand in FY twenty-two, so I'm projecting about thirty. I think, that's a lot.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Um, so the, the difference, the. So the, the difference, the, the reduction is primarily due to that one-time revenue payment for New Hampshire Retirement that was used to offset taxes this year. So that's something that's great for this year, but we don't get any credit for next year. So it's good, we should, you know, broadcast that, that, that did help to reduce.
Reduction in revenue.
Right.
Next year.
Yep, yep. So then the next line is the estimated fund balance. So the one million, one sixty-three, eight forty-four was what was used to offset the taxes for this year. We're being very conservative at this point, we're going to continue to look at it, but my budget director did a projection, and it was around five hundred thousand. That's also about two and a half percent of your budget. So it's not a bad number to use right now, but we'll continue to look at specific, specific accounts and further refine that for January, and then again for deliberative. So this is a conservative estimate at this point. So that also shows a, a decrease in revenue. So the FY twenty-three was our, our actuals from FY twenty-four that carried over to FY twenty-three. This FY twenty-four is a projection of this current year FY twenty-three that would carry over.
Okay, so that, so the estimated fund balance or FY twenty-three would include revenue from FY twenty-two as well as any unassigned fund balance that carried over. But the FY twenty-four estimate is the cost only and not a revenue included estimate, right?
It, it's, it's both, but it's very conservative. So.
So there could, there's probably revenue.
Well, last year we get some health trust.
Last year we had health, health trust, yeah.
So, even though it just happened, so last year you got health trust, last year you got to have to retire. So that.
Yeah.
And so that's why you were at a significant reduction in revenue, which goes directly to tax rate. Because what's interesting is we spend all the time on a, right, a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar expense budget. Our revenue is doubled then.
So, right now, we're projecting a, a decrease in revenue of seven twenty-six, one thirty-six.
On your, an issue on your tax rate is two hundred, two million is a dollar. So that's, you know, you're talking, you know, you're talking thirty-three cents.
Thirty-three cents, just because we're not receiving the same amount of revenue.
So, next slide. So, to calculate the projected tax effort, you'll, you take your total appropriation for FY twenty-three, and then FY twenty-four, that's our budget, that's the difference between, between the years of four forty-four, six ninety-one, and that's, it looks different than what's presented because the FY twenty-three includes the eighty-five thousand for the turf. And then you subtract your revenue, which that's, those are the, the amounts that were on the previous slide. Then you subtract the state adequacy aid and the statewide property tax. So those are, those are the total amounts for both Amherst and Mount Vernon. And then, so your resulting amount is the estimated tax effort. So the difference between the two years is a million seventy-seven, eight sixty-six.
How much of that is revenue?
No. All right, so. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we can go to that. Yeah, yep. And then, next slide, so the projected tax. Yep, projected tax impact. We have the total tax effort for FY twenty-three and twenty-four. So that's that million seventy-seven, eight forty-eight. And then for Amherst, the amount, the difference from twenty-three to twenty-four is nine eighty-seven, seven, seven thirty-six. And then you divide that by the valuation, and that's how you get your tax impact. And then the same thing for Mount Vernon, it's ninety thousand, one thirty, divided by their valuation, and it's twenty-eight cents. So, I know Stephen, you've asked about the, the percentage between Amherst and Mount Vernon. It doesn't align with these differences, and the reason is that you have your total tax effort and you apply the percentage to that, and then you subtract the specific adequacy and swept to the town. So Amherst has a different adequacy and swept amount than Mount Vernon. So, and I can bring it up on the, the sheet and the, and the budget file. Yep. Yep, so, and on that sheet, the only thing I'm missing is I don't have the average home amount yet. I put in just last year's that I had for now, but those are highlighted because I don't, I haven't received those yet. So, for the Sohagen budget, the estimated tax impact for Amherst is forty-two cents, and the estimated tax impact for Mount Vernon is twenty-eight cents.
It was really well done, about, in order to get the full adequacy swept, you apply it after.
You do. Right.
Going to Amy Facy College.
I learned it last year, so.
You had a good time.
Yeah. So, all right, yeah. So next, we'll move on to facility and reserves review, this is the same sheet that you all have seen, and this has the skylight information in here, so that three eighty-five, that's the balance, we're looking to potentially draw those funds out of that. And for the most part, keep our, our balances in line. So the, the plan that's being proposed, that will be discussed at the public hearing, is having that phase one work begin this summer. Phase two would be the following year, and then phase three is in FY twenty-nine. So I, I don't think this has changed, I'm pretty sure this is the same that was presented in draft two, yeah.
The same to me.
Yeah.
What, it never drops below the hundred thousand per building.
Maybe this year, like, well, depending on we, when we have to pay out. Free thirteen.
Waiting so long to do that last phase of the skylights.
I talked to Roger about that.
On it, I know he's so on it, I trust, I trust his judgment, it just seems strange, right?
Yep, I know, I've asked him a few times, and he feels good about it, so.
Okay. Trust the expert.
Yep. So then this is just that same reserve review, oh, if you want to move to the next slide, sorry. So, the balance in the property maintenance fund, and we're, we're recommending the, the two-twenty so that we can fund all these projects and keep a good balance. The turf field, we're recommending the seventy thousand. And then the technology fund, which is new, recommending the twenty-five thousand. And we feel good about the student with disabilities fund with their balance at three seventy-eight. And then we talked last time about that unfunded liabilities retirement fund of fifty-four. And I think we're going to, guys wanted to keep that, or is that, keep it for now, okay, all right, yep. All right, so, moving on to the warrant articles, this is just a summary of all of the proposed warrant articles.
Second, sorry, just dawning on me, would we decide that we were going to keep that for this year? I thought that was a question that had not yet been decided. Decided to.
But I thought the discussion was the key, we can always use it, we wanted to use it.
Well.
I think we were, yeah.
Question like, okay, it's been, it's been, it was created at a time whenever, and the change in the law happened, that we thought that.
And then we're going to decide, I, I, we weren't sure we're going to get it this year on the details, so I think we weren't going to react too quickly on it, but.
Based on the trends that we're seeing on the current, you know, stage of our faculty progression, and, you know, we have some more retirements to look at tonight, I think, right now, the best thing to do is, it gives the board more flexibility. And I do think there's going to be more interest in retirement based on where our natural progression is, so. I don't think it's liquidate time, I really don't, I don't think it's liquidated and cost of revenue, we got.
We might need it.
But you might, but you could, you could liquidate it, do fifty-four thousand dollars of revenue, it would be short.
I was thinking, I was thinking board bonuses would be nice.
Don't even joke.
Dissolving this at a time when retirement turn PC. That's what I'd like the board to think about.
Okay, well, let's hear what you have to say about retirements when it, when it comes to that.
All right, so this is just a, a summary of all of the appropriations. So, the total change is a three-point-eight percent increase from FY twenty-three. And then we have your warrant articles. So here's your budget warrant article. It has the amount in the default, and then just go to the next one. And your school maintenance fund warrant article for two-twenty. And then your turf field for seventy. And then this is the technology fund, so this will both establish and raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand to come from unassigned fund balance.
Because we talked about whether it's going to be a capital reserve or a revolving fund like that turf field, so we're going to, capital reserve fund makes appropriate.
Yes, yes, yep. And and then just the review process, so tonight you have draft three. Next up will be your budget hearing preparation meeting, and then, or public hearing preparation meeting, public hearing deliberative, and then voting. So definitely take questions. I don't know if the board is prepared to move these warrant articles to the public hearing, or if you want to wait until January third. It's not a problem for me either way. I would, because there's only a week between that public hearing preparation and public hearing, we probably want to start working on the slideshow presentation. I mean, we have, I think, you'll pretty much use most of what I have, but you probably want to make some tweaks and add some items, so maybe, you know, Steffi and I can coordinate on that, and you can work with whatever board members are going to be presenting, so, but maybe just to get a head start, it would be a good idea.
Okay.
All right, so let's first go back to any questions on the budget information that was presented tonight, or revenue questions.
So, it's not really a question about this, but it's just throwing it out, so I'm not putting you on the spot when we do our public work next month. It might be, I'd be interested to see what the total increase has been since twenty-twenty-two? Because I assume it was very small because we were in a default, and I think at a public presentation, that might be a worthwhile metric to show, you know, like, this is not two-point-eight on top of two-point-eight last year, on top of, you know, I mean, this is, so just, just, if you could have that for the future ones, and it may already be part of what you normally present, I don't know, but that'd be great.
We haven't actually, yeah, we haven't actually, like a trend, like a trend, like what does budget look like over the past? But we'd be interesting to take.
I do have that.
Five, ten years, it's something we could look at, see if it makes sense.
But a couple of years worth or something.
I, I think it is important to kind of look at this also in the context of coming up from a default, I mean, this, it would be a smaller increase if it was coming from the you know, the.
I hear what you're saying.
You know, so.
So looking at what the, the proposed was, yeah, yep, it's true.
Or just, again, or just what it was the total over the two because it was so small last year, because there's some things we have to kind of make up for and make sure we're including.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, yep.
Yes, it will be handout information as well as presented information. But the trick is, we need to make sure that the handout information is available for those who are going to watch via Zoom, that they can get it as well, so that's going to be very important for us to be able to say they can download it online.
So what, I would, I I know, but I want to see if anyone has questions on any budget articles, I do want to hear from Sohagen Finance Committee, and then we'll come back and vote on the warrant articles. Yeah. Yep, that's my thought process, because I want to make sure Finance Committee gets in. Any other questions on what was presented on budget or revenue? Or anything else?
Maybe just leave it.
Okay, yeah. All right, if there's no other questions, Jeannie, do you want to present for Finance Committee?
Real quick, I noticed that our, because I guess the original budget workshop, second one was scheduled for December the thirteenth, and that got canceled, but our Finance Committee meeting is happening that night, at that time, at six o'clock on December the thirteenth, and it's not on the calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll add that, I'm so sorry.
I just want to make sure.
No, you're right.
It's up there, so we're meeting at six o'clock in the Brick School. So I just wanted to make sure, everybody knew that. And also, obviously, Amy, you'll share these slides with us tomorrow so that.
Yes.
Pass it out.
So the budget file is updated with all of these numbers. So the, the tabs are updated with the new numbers, there's draft three is in there, a variance report from draft two to draft three. The personnel is updated, the categories chart is updated, and this presentation is a link on the Table of Contents page.
Okay, good, I'll pass that on.
Yep, but I can share as well, if that's easier for folks, however, if you want to do it.
It should be easy to find.
Yeah, it's right there as a link, right, on draft three presentation.
Good, and then I had one question, could you explain why, you know, the state adequacy aid and then state prop, statewide property tax, they seem to go up and down? And I, and I'm not really sure why they do that. I mean, I know they go down because we maybe have less students or fewer students, I, I don't know, but I don't know about the statewide property tax and how yet.
You're right, they, they do work together to make it pretty whole.
Is that the way it works?
They do, yes, the, the swept, three hundred and sixty-three million always, it's fixed at that amount, so when one drop, one does increase, they do.
Okay, okay.
But it really is local tax, swept is, swept is a local tax base here, so the notion that it's not adequacy comes from outside, swept comes from the wonderful people of Amherst.
Right, right, okay, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. And we, we haven't, I will say that the minutes from our last meeting are going to have all of our reports embedded in them, so, you know, we'll, we'll share that with you all so that you can see the updated reports since, you know, the newer drafts have come out. So.
Great.
We're, we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you. So, I appreciate, you know, the Sohagen Finance Committee's work, they've dug in, and we've had some good conversations, so, appreciate it.
Yeah, well, it's all.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, so voting on warrant articles to put forward for the public hearing.
Table until the third. So Hegan Advisory Finance is meeting in advance of that. Whatever the final outcome is of their thinking, we should have the benefit of, where we, especially if it doesn't harm any. Harm anything as we've learned tonight.
Perfectly fine to wait. It's in, it's in, um, we feel pretty strong about right. We, the capital reserve, work facilities, we feel great. Turf field that's reduced in the tech, it's establishing to even out costs in the next three years. Absolutely talk with S A F C, but I think it's a. The board has done a great job. It's a strong proposal. We're waiting to prepare. It's no problem.
Yeah.
Um, my thought is to vote on it tonight because there's nothing new there. They've been, we've been discussing them. The things that we've done, either things we've done for years already, or things that we've been discussing all year long. So they're not, it's not new information to us or the advisory finance committee. If there were any concerns, they would have come up by now.
Is that a safe assumption? You don't object? I mean, I, I don't object personally. I'm just thinking sort of, um, you know, mechanically. Don't want to put you out. Okay. Okay. Well, I, I'll trust you. I don't want to get blindsided by. We met and oh, we just realized all this horrible thing, but I guess we could come back and make an amendment if we had to.
That's what I was gonna ask. I mean, if, if something really unsurprising happened between now and January third, we could always revisit it.
Yeah, I think so.
I think so too.
Okay. Let's vote on it then. Sure.
Yep.
Have him a spacey beat. So then she can send a D R A and knock this stuff out.
Yeah, I would like to submit it to the.
Anything that makes her happy makes me happy.
Like to be able to prepare.
Well, to answer his question. He had the same question. I assume we both assume that if something unexpected happened. We can always amend. Okay.
All right. So each one individually needed. Is that right?
I would prefer.
Yes. Okay. So we need a motion, we'll say on the operating budget. Our article two.
I make a motion to move article two to as written.
Second.
Is that the right wording? Okay, they got a first and second. Um, any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Those in favor. Any opposed? No one's opposed. Okay, that passes. Next article.
To article three as written.
Second.
First and second, same people got it today. All right. Um, any discussion? Nope. All right. Those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. That passes. Article four.
Article four as written.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Nope. Those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. And one more? Technology. Whoop. One more.
Yep. The article five.
Need an article number, uh, article five. We'll move article five.
I move to move article five. And it's written. And after it has article five.
Second. All right.
It was amended.
We can actually watch it in action.
No pressure.
Don't make a mess. Okay. Now we have article five. Okay, so it was moved, it was seconded. Um, any other discussion on? The wording of it or the funding? Nope. Okay, those in, in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? That one passes as well. That is all of them. Amy, you can move forward. Awesome. And we will, oh, we'll work with uh, so we can finance committee on any question we have as well. Yes. All right. Uh, January board schedule. Amy, thank you so much. If there's nothing else, go home. You've probably been working all day. Um, yeah, January boards.
So um, this connects to the brief conversation just had. So taking a look at a very busy month. So um, January third will be a public hearing with a, a. Prep and meeting afterwards. And also January tenth, we're going to have the public hearing and have a meeting after that. Um, if, if you would like, if I, if we can move some of the January tenth stuff to January third and just have one. We can look at that for you. Um, what, but we have to. So we have it anyway. So one of the things we have to hit is, um, we have to finalize retirements by a certain date. So that happens during one, one of those two meetings. Um, and then January thirteenth and you're busy and then. And then. Because we've just met, had a board meeting on the tenth and had a board meeting on the third.
Yeah.
I'm offering to, to cancel January sixteenth because Amherst needs that for a snow date.
Well, it's so many dates. I've heard three different dates, but the calendar is January twelfth. Yes.
So you already have to meet. So.
Yeah. Do we need a motion?
I think you and I. We can everything done on the third and the tenth. That's all right with you.
I'm, everyone okay, third and the tenth? Yes, a hundred percent. Thank you. My meeting. Yeah. Well, that has to move that public area. Yeah, that has to go.
So the tenth is the public hearing on it. Yeah, okay. And then our meeting afterward.
And then you, then you vote to what to send.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so normally what happens is.
So in this case, so he is going first, then you'll have your board meeting afterward to move your warrant articles to deliberative. Um, and then Amherst does their seven o'clock um, public hearing and then they'll do the same. So and then Mount Vernon is on the eleventh. So the twelve was scheduled just because that's your normal board meeting time, but you've already had two. Meetings. So. Right. Yep. Right.
Yes.
The thirteenth is everyone.
What's the thirteen? Oh, I don't have that. Okay.
So if I can make a suggestion for a chair.
I think those normal times.
Yeah. And you have the third as well. If you have like things that you need to get done, because that's your, your prep. Yep. Yeah. So you have two opportunities.
Yes.
Yep.
And so is it like recorded like normal?
It's a normal board meeting. Yep. And you're at six, you're after Amherst. So you'll. You have more time if you need it. So.
I'm just going to keep preparing brief for the recognition, the thirty year celebration thing of doing high school. So it was just a, a thought. Had a little bit. Um, just trying to call the ideas, how to potentially make something a little special, whether it's, you know, a celebration during the school day. For staff administration kids. Uh, whether it's a recognition we want to do around graduation or what it's, it, you know, it's not a big twenty five year. It's not a big fifth year. But it's something and to, to think about that we might just want to say, hey, this is kind of neat. This is great. Thank you very much. So if you think of ideas, shoot them off to me. We can discuss them at a later time, but I kind of want to get the ball rolling in case. Something comes up.
Cupcakes for everyone.
Cupcakes for all. I'm on it.
So I'm not going to be, in, include entire discussion here because I know we've been going. Okay. Um, retirements.
So, um, this connects to our, our, our most recent discussion. So. Um, there's two different areas of retirement. There's regular order, which is the five thousand and eighty five hundred. You get certain money this year. That's the eighteenth. That's the uh, previous year notice. You with me? Um, and that based on the, as Christine and I read the policy, that is uh, everyone who requests.
And is eligible.
And is eligible. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. So like some.
Up to a certain number.
Yeah, we just look, we couldn't see the number.
Not regular order.
So this is where.
So, so sorry, it has to be requested and eligible.
Eligible, which is fifteen years, right?
Fifteen years, I need to be cut.
So, um, and when part of the separation um, pay beyond the retirement. Payment is also a payout of sick time. Um, a third. So in that is also you're eligible for payout of your sick team. I think after ten years, maybe fifteen, that might be.
Over anyway.
Anybody's like this year, we had a couple of employees left, right? And that took some. And so for example, um, we had, we've had. Two recent notifications of um, retirement. But they don't fall under either of the retirement incentive clauses of the contract, but they still get payout for a third of six, which. Based on recent analysis is about fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars. You with me? So if we get four more. I don't know if we will, but if we get four more, we, that's twenty thousand dollars we're going to have to come up with for the first payment. Or if we get people who leave, that's a third of their sick. If we and we, if, if Nick, if we are in default. We may have to use the fifty four thousand that was in the retirement little fund that Amy found. Um, in order to cover those costs. And so I, my recommendation is for this year and next, as we are starting to see in my, and this isn't generally, this is just where the stage of the. A percentage of the faculty are at South Heaton. They're getting to the stage of where this is more prevalent than earlier. So having that cushion of the retirement um, trust allows us to. Even in, 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 I don't know if you caught my little video. I'm very concerned about going consecutive defaults. If we are in consecutive defaults next year, I do worry about having enough funds to, to cover retirements. So the fifty four thousand dollars and that would be a great asset to this place. Still gives you. You, and Stephen talked about this before. It still gives you opportunity liquid if you need it, right? You can do that. Um, but what we, what I would not recommend is putting it on the warrant. It's dissolving this and have it go back to revenue. I would keep it because we may need it because of certain budgetary circumstances beyond our control. And so we have two people who, and I don't know the custom here. And in my past life, when someone brought something for retirement. It was very public and it was accolades. It was very much a public appreciation, but I'm not sure if that happens here. So they might not want to be known tonight, but um, so but there are two new requests FY twenty four. And those are regular order and we will start those payments per PPC policy of the five thousand dollars installment in May. I think it's May. It's before June. Before June thirtieth. Um, so those are new and those will be accepted. And then we have two people who are retiring, who will get the. Who don't qualify for either one, but they will get some separation.
End of this year.
Correct. That is correct. I mean, the date that they have to tell us for regular order is January one.
Okay. And that's the eighteen months.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, so. So we, oh, let me just organize my thoughts. So some of that money is going to come out of this year's budget. Cause you're going to start paying them before the end of the fiscal year.
That is correct.
Okay. But that's a small part of what you're going to pay them. The bigger payout comes when. The next year, the next fiscal year.
Correct.
So the question I have is. Because right now we don't know. How many people are going to put in for regular order due on January one?
Correct.
Once we know. Then we may have to adjust the budget and the warrant we just proved. To, we could say, ah, it's six. Oh, we can now know with certainty that that's going to be this dollar amount in fiscal year twenty four. And because it's required by our agreement. It can go into, and it should go into our default budget calculation. I would expect there to be an update to the default budget calculation. On after Jan, adding January third when we meet. To, to reflect how many people in regular order, and we have an anticipated foreseeable cost. It's required under our contract. Yes.
So, oh, great. Love this. We'd, Amy and I would go back and look at our, how we budget this. Usually we budget this over a five year or three year average. And we'll see where our average is. I don't think we've budgeted actuals. Typically on something like this, you do over time in averages. Um, and I suspect, I think that's what you and I've talked about, that, that this amount is average. Um, and so, and I don't know, I don't have the, the, the long, you know, the longevity here to understand the ups and flows of this. Happy to look at it because I appreciate what you're saying, but we may over five year average. I think we probably just budgeted the amount. Because it also includes separation pay, not retirement pay.
That we can't budget for separation pay. Someone could come to us on June first.
Oh, okay. Well, there's, okay. So that's different. That's where, that's not regular order, what we're.
No, it's it, but just with the budget pot right now, this year, or the customer is one pot. You know, we could look at next year as Amy and I dig in on this stuff. We could look at having a retirement separation pot. And an average of um, just natural separation pot. Right now it's one pot.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a way to, to minimize the freak out because if we can't, we don't know how many people are going to put in for regular order. There's no cap you said. We have a, what did you say? We have a population of teachers that have been here a long time. So there's going to be some churn in the coming years of retirements. We don't know when, we don't know how many. So. So we have to be rigid on the January ones so that at least what we can foresee, we can put into our default. We should do that.
I really appreciate the forethought of establishing the trust fund of fifty four thousand dollars. To take care of this and reduce anxiety because we have fifty four thousand. That's three people's separation benefit portion of it. That's legit. And we haven't, right? I, I mean, I think we're okay and, and um, I wouldn't. We haven't touched it in a while and I don't know if it's, it, I don't, to be honest, I don't know if we're in a lot, lot. It just, it just started coming because it's near in January one. Um, and we can go look, but I think it's coming, right? I mean, Mike and I, you know, Mike, we've talked about this, that. The profile of our staff, it is. So I think. Having the fifty four thousand is, I'm just trying to say it's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm not even arguing about that. I'm just saying. If we needed to use that because of the other thing, the separation payments that are, we don't know when that's going to happen. Then that money could be, I mean, I guess it's a retirement fund. So I don't know if, if the put to that fund could be used for something like that. That's a different question. I'm, I'm not, there's enough uncertainty in our system. Everything is an estimate.
Correct.
Right now, everything for fiscal twenty four is an estimate. There's another reason why we should move our election day forward. So we can get a better estimate.
Yeah, I won't, I won't join you on that one because of hiring and contracts, April fifteenth.
Well, I have an answer for that, by the way, um, or to further that discussion. But for this point, I mean. I don't know how you can use a three year average if, if you're over here, you don't know how many people are coming. If in one year you get one person, next year you get five people. Why is, how do you use that average? It's completely unforeseeable. I, what? What certainty do you have that the averaging makes any sense?
The only thing we have is, is time and right, but history doesn't necessarily right predict future performance, but on, on, we, we do that for. Repair, we averages, when you don't know definite, definite, your averages and I have never. Changed a warrant. An article, the value on a January one deadline, even if someone, once we, you know, and we just figure we'll make it to.
That thought, that thought is actually about, we don't, you don't want to. What do we know the age, population of, of the teachers? If you go only on actuals, you're potentially could be low. You're better off using an estimate, you're saying you kind of know where things fall. We worried about increasing or were you wanting to decrease? We have ample opportunity now and are deliberately to do that, right? So we can show up and say, hey, the forty one million reduce our, our, our close budget by sixteen thousand dollars, five hundred.
We can do that.
We can also say, hey, we had enormous amount of people show up on our January and eighth, we're going to need to now increase that budget by two hundred fifty. Whatever that number is, there's ample enough opportunity to do that between now and then.
That's.
If your concern is to reduce and how it impacts full budget, I'd be very cautious to do that based on the separations.
Because we do end up in a situation where it's going to jeopardize our ability to subsume that, I'd be very uncomfortable about doing that.
That's.
Yeah, I I think so, I I this, okay, it's very simple, it's 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 meant to. We have a certain, we will know on January one, how many people were, we know specifically who they are, we know specifically how much sick time they have, we can calculate all the numbers that are going to be paid out in twenty fiscal year twenty four.
Not all of it.
Close, because they're going to use sick time.
But that's okay. Fifteen thousand, that.
Yeah, we're close.
Weeks of the build over fifteen years.
We're close.
It's going to be, we're going to be really good estimate. A specific estimate. We're going to know that, we should add that to our default budget, because we're required to pay that, we should add that to our fiscal year default budget calculation, because we have certainty with the number now. And we and we'll protect that everyone from have freak out about not having enough funds to cover something that we already know is coming down the pipe. That's what I'm suggesting that we do, that we take that information, we hustle on it. And we we make whatever adjustment need now, maybe it just so happens that we get. The miss a regular number, an average number of people, and that number is fits well with what's already in our default, and we don't have to do anything.
So I I think we want to make sure our default covers the known.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. That passed, we wouldn't actually know on January one who the names are. That gives us certainty to know what. Yes. Yes. It it only affects the default budget calculation, it's nothing to do with the proposed.
Let's get the number at our January third agency.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I love it, I learn, I'm going to learn stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it's okay, it's just a pre review. Yeah, no, it's fine. It's a pre review, yeah, yeah. What what goes to the public hearing is a draft, what goes to the what gets posted for deliberative is not, so I I'm going to want to get. Maybe some legal advice on what goes into the default for retirement payments, because right now we have it at the FY twenty three. Amount, so we budgeted more for retirement based on some of, you know, yeah, some known and. And Katie actually did some pretty strong calculations to come up with the FY twenty four proposed amount. But I'm not sure if we, I I just, I'm going to want some legal advice on what goes into the default. I guess, but.
Yeah, I think I think our number in the twenty three is higher than.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure.
But we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
All right.
So. The two who were requested, or you can wait until after January one, when they're all at the same time.
Yes, please.
Yeah, we do like on January third or January. All at once after January one, I think that I think they like.
We we will know the whole.
Yeah.
Right.
That's enough.
I'm delivered in February. All right. Next on the agenda is just, there's a title line follow up, we just, we need to follow through on. So during November twenty, during the November eighteen, twenty twenty one, so Hegan fought the school board emergency meeting. John Glover was told that he could not be in a room or be on phone call one on one with his employees. So one can easily assess that this would relate to text messages as well. On January nine, twenty twenty two, John Glover sent a private text message around one thirty five AM to an SAU employee who requested for the. This message was in regards to a budget question, but John did violate the motion that the so even school board that he claims during the emergency meeting. And his actions made the employee approach remain possible. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion formally censure John Glover for contacting an employee in a private manner that was violated, so he didn't cooperate. One second. I don't know, we will watch the session on this. The only discussion I would say is that I can do down matter, even without a motion, we should all be in a parent or respectful of our, you know, the employees' time. To give us a lot of, a lot of time here, and I think communication generally, we should be through. Emails to their work emails, and calls to their work number and that sort of thing. All right, so first, I have a vote.
Most of we have some discussion. Oh, I have something to say. I welcome the motion, I want to be clear about that, I think it's important that. That people take accountability for their actions, I said at that that meeting, and at the previous SAU meeting where motions were made. That I was eager to take accountability for my actions, so I'm not afraid to do that. And if I if I knew now what I knew, what what I if I knew now. On January ninth. It would have been a different result, I can guarantee you that. Here's, I knew about that that motion. However. That motion is not, none of the motions that were made, or anything that those employees actually requested. That motion was made on November eighteenth, hours before on November eighteenth, Stephanie Grund. And Stephen O'Keefe were aware of what those employees wanted. The superintendent of schools and the human resources director knew what the employees wanted and did not want to do.
I am real quick, we've heard this a lot.
No, you haven't heard this. Well, this, what I knew and how I acted is relevant to this vote. You want to hold people accountable to their actions. There is relevant facts and actions by people that could have averted this. The superintendent's email to you, Stephen O'Keefe, and to you, Stephanie Grund. About four hours before the November eighteenth SAU meeting cited specifically. Don't contact me on my personal cell phone, don't be in a room of meetings alone, prefer electronic communications. And if a phone call has to be, is warranted, then schedule it advanced so another person can be there. Perfect. Be specific, easy to comply with if given knowledge, you guys didn't tell me. About that, you know, you said all my communications must go through the superintendent. Oh, no, no, with all, that had to be amended, no, just to the, all SAU employees, they didn't request that all of my communications go through the SAU superintendent. You you tried to strip me of all my committee assignments, then was like, oh, don't be in a room and alone, that actually had some connective tissue to what they respect, what they had requested, and by the way. It's perfectly entitled to to request those, a very reasonable, and and it's not my place to judge, pass judgment on on what they wanted, they're perfectly entitled, I am perfectly happy to comply. Would have always been perfectly happy to comply. I need the knowledge. Shame on you, both of you, for not telling me. Why would these motions made, why wouldn't they, here's what we got from the superintendent, oh, you know what that email also said? Neither of the employee wished to file official complaints, I think the word official can be exchanged for formal. But you knew, both of you, on that day, there were no formal complaints, and that there were specific supportive measures that were requested, and you failed. To inform me. And that led to a successive. Events. A long time, a lot of money was spent. On a fiction. That is true. Yes. That's correct.
A text message on your cell phone. Is a call.
Right, I I wish I would have emailed. You know, in the business hours with a copy to the superintendent, I would have been, think it would have been fine. But I don't know, we'll have to sort that out.
Well, and I I would just add, if I may really briefly, that my understanding of the motion is that we're, the the specific issue is that this was a motion that this board passed. With with all due respect, John, your input, I think you, you know, when I went back and looked at the minutes, you said, I think it ought to be limited to this even more. And so I think we need to have, like you just said, accountability for the things that regardless of how we got there, there was a meeting, this board made this decision. That was violated, and we should be holding each other accountable for those things. And I, and to me, that's the limited scope of what this is about.
Yes, yes, and I I accept the accountability for that, and I apologize to anyone. Who was uncomfortable based on my actions as a result of that, it was never. Never my intent ever to upset anybody, so.
So let's just do a vote on that. Those in favor of the motion. Those opposed. Those that abstained. And I just want to address all school board members in the SAU by saying, we all need to strive to be professional, it's an example for our talents based on our behavior. We have a policy regarding school board ethics, and we need to make the standards set forth in our policy. We represent our communities, and we should do so in a manner that upwears and supports our student status, so I'd just ask everybody. Anyway, you know how effective it is.
Laura Taylor, Amherst, New Hampshire. I was looking at the facilities, my only comment is on the skylight repair and. There was a lot of unassigned fund balance, what if we're in a default this year? What if we end up in a default next year, but the warrant articles pass? Will we have enough unassigned fund balance to cover the warrant articles, because that was like. Over three hundred thousand, which seemed like a lot amount. And and then your long term repair, you're going to ding people every single year. And put it at risk of not passing, we would have to, you know, it would then be increased, we could still be default. I think with inflation. The unassigned fund balances might be a narrower margins, I don't know. With expenses that fluctuate throughout the year. Those are my comments, I'm just, I wouldn't mind seeing a bond for something like the skylights, I wouldn't mind seeing a bond for the building. Something that, just give me the full amount, in the past, that's been done by other boards, and when I think air conditioners, and I don't know who lived in town and remembered that, but. Thank you, just my opinion.
Is there anyone else?
Two, no insight.
If anyone is online, it would be great to speak, if you can raise your hand. Great, staying on. That will end a, end the public input session, certainly, the main one is non-public.
A second. Second, everything else.
Lover, yes.
Hey, yes.
Bronster, yes.